Okay, friends, I'm just getting set up here. We're gonna go live as soon as the meeting starts. Still setting up. I do have some commentary I was gonna bring you, but I kind of ran out of time. Let's stop this and hide this. Bring that back. Okay, so I do have a presentation. I have a lot of stuff to bring you. Breaking updates, Town of Union Resolution. I was gonna talk about the agenda for what's gonna go on tonight. It looks like there is gonna be a public hearing. If you want to participate in the public hearing, you gotta get on the Zoom. Let me tell you how to do that. I'll leave something in the show notes or in the... I'll leave a comment or a chat, actually, and show you how to do that. Let me just... I can do it another way. Okay, just stand by. I'm gonna bring you Village of Endicott. The board meeting, regular board meeting is coming up. There, the agenda does include the incinerator. That is on the agenda. What's apparently the... The Delta report is done and the Delta report is... The report looking at the protest petition. And so the protest petition was to get a super majority vote. Looks like it is starting. The protest petition was zoning change, very large... Or a zoning change was gonna happen that was gonna impact a very large area of Endicott. Needed to be done. And because of that zoning change, it opens up the opportunity for this thing called a protest petition. If so many landowners within, you know, 20%, I think is the threshold, within 100 feet of the impacted zone can say, "I don't like this," and they can seek a review by maybe the zoning board. I'm not sure exactly what. They filed this protest petition. It's been in the works for a long time. And they've been looking at it. It doesn't look good, doesn't look like they're gonna meet the threshold. So then it looks like also on the agenda, they're gonna vote to rescind the voting, the zoning change. Remember, prior to 5/7, there was an express prohibition of incinerators in any zone in the Village of Endicott. And express prohibition. What that, what does that mean, Bill? That means... How can I set the color? Make it yellow. All right, so they had to undo the express prohibition. Lynda Jackson called that adding special restrictions. That's not what it was. It was removing the prohibition for incinerators, but they did it in a really shoddy way. There was a lot of procedural errors. And so they're gonna talk about that tonight. So they're gonna actually, the report's done. The Delta report, they actually hired an engineering firm to decide, you know, look at the GIS, look at the population data, whatever, and decide whether or not they actually met the threshold or not. Word I'm getting is they didn't meet the threshold. So, and I just wanna reiterate, it looks like there is gonna be a public hearing tonight. So if you want to participate in the public hearing, you've gotta get on the Zoom call or you gotta call in. So I left a link in the... I left a link in the live chat. So that's where you need to go to get the link for the Zoom call. So, okay, so everybody grab your popcorn. These are always very interesting meetings. They're never dull. They are never a dull moment. Let me see. Nothing there. Boy, I've sure got... Sure got a lot of people upset about all kinds of different things. COVID, people are upset about COVID. It's a stressful time, isn't it? And people are upset about politics. I can't, I can't get behind a child groper with dementia. Sorry, don't expect me to. Everybody's going Joe Biden. And it's like hatred of Trump. Trump is like, like a fetish, like a voodoo fetish. You know, those little dolls that you stick pins in? Democrats for four years have been waking up every day, sticking pins in Donald Trump. "Hey, yo, stop the orange menace." You know, stupid. I see it on social media. The Democrats just attack Trump relentlessly, trying to work with him on promoting some kind of an environmental agenda was never part of the conversation. So that was just a little bit weird. The Democrats seem to have their own agenda. And I don't think they wanna beat Trump. They say they do, but they put up somebody like Joe Biden and everybody has to get behind him? Okay, so Joe Biden, let's recall. He's an international gangster. He used a billion dollar loan to pressure Ukraine to drop a criminal investigation against his son for some shady business dealings with that Burisma oil company. You know, he's a pathological liar. Go watch, there's an old 60 Minutes interview that you can find with Connie Chung from the 1980s, when he ran for the first time. And they caught him, you know, all kinds of lying about plagiarism, lying about his record. He's a pathological liar, Joe Biden is. He's been a whole, his whole life. There's a clip Jimmy Dore plays of Joe Biden saying that he... He describes himself as being basically a prostitute for the rich. That's what he said. You know, he, he's a war criminal. He's a fracker. He helped with Obama, helped build 80, I would say 85% of the Keystone Pipeline System. XL is a very large chunk of it, which is like 15%, I guess, right? Most of it was built under Joe Biden. And he, he's a serial predator. You know, hair sniffing, child groping, accused rapist. I'm not doing it. I'm not playing. I don't think Biden and Harris, Harris is like a fascist. She's a fascist. So they're not trying very hard if they wanna beat Trump. They wanna beat Trump, they're gonna go left. They found like pretty much the only Democratic team that was farther right than Trump. That's what you got, Democrats. So you're pushing party over anything. Party over principle, party over morals, party over values, party over person's track record. That's what you're asking for. That's what you're asking for, friends. Asking for Joe Biden. Go ahead, you vote for the child groper. Go ahead, you do it. Tell me how good you feel in the morning, knowing that you're defeating a greater evil. War criminal, international gangster, pathological liar, prostitute for the rich, child groper, hair sniffer with dementia. Go for it. You do it. You vote for Joe Biden. People go, "Oh, one of them's gonna win. You better vote for the best with the lesser of two evils." I don't agree with that. I think the reason we got here is because we've been voting for the lesser of two evils for 40 years. Forty years we've been voting for the lesser of two evils, and this is what we get. And the Democrats pull the same scheme over and over again. I made a meme about this. It was like, Democrats in 2016, here's your Hillary Clinton. Democrats are like, "F you." Okay. 2020, what do we get? Biden, Harris, yay, DNC, that's who they give us. It's like, are we caught in a loop? Is this like, is this like Groundhog Day? All right, we are still waiting for the meeting to start. It says... Oh, wait, start is at 7:00? Start is at 7:00? I thought it was at 6:00. Did they change the time? I might have to make a phone call, get a clarification on this. Meetings. Did it push back till 7:00? It says it's starting at 7:00. Meeting those Village Board of Trustees. Okay, look at that. Well, we do have time. All righty, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you then for a while. That's excellent. They must have pushed back the time for some reason. I was pretty sure that said 6:00 PM just a minute ago. Okay, well, all righty, so this is great. I have an hour. We have an hour to chat. We have an hour to chat. And... I gotta find the right starting point. This is the right starting point. Okay, so... Let me just see what I'm doing here. Okay. It's not too bad. Let me just frame it up a little bit. All right, well, we've got some updates. We've got some updates. Got some COVID updates we could do. We could do, but I do have like incinerator updates. Incinerator updates, that's what you really want, right? You don't want the COVID updates. I'm gonna do a whole COVID update, whole COVID show. I'm working on it. All righty, so here we go. Endicott, New York. I hope you are all lighting up Donna Lupardo's phone. And... Thought I had that. Okay, sorry, hang on one second. There we go. Okay, so contact Donna. Donna's in this deep. She's really in it deep. And she, as we read to you in her latest gaslighting letter... Okay, she's, she hasn't said incinerator. She hasn't said high temperature rotary kiln. She hasn't talked about the afterburner. She hasn't talked about the emissions. Once she did, she said, "Any manufacturing facility is gonna have emissions." Like, what? Not manufacturing. So she's not mentioning any of that. She's not talking about the incinerator, but she did happen to mention the heating process. So we're getting incremental changes on Donna Lupardo. She's getting incrementally better, but call her up and ask her for a legal seeker review. Ask her why she has trouble answering the question whether the DEC should follow the law. Leave her a message. Call anytime. That's her office. Or call during the day and talk to her staff. Donna Lupardo, she's in this deep. She's been the one that's brought this here. I know everybody thinks that she's like the big environmentalist. I'm telling you, she brought this here and it's being done illegally. And when you ask her about it being illegal, she's like, "I'm not, I can't, I'm not able, I'm can't, I'm not prepared." She starts dancing, okay, dancing. So we gotta melt Donna's phone. We're still trying to get a legal seeker process. This is, the red one's what we got. That's, that's the Endicott special. I should call this slide, the Endicott special. The red, the red path. That's what we got with stink trucks. That's what we got with the, that's what we're getting with the incinerators so far. That's the Endicott special. No public hearings, no environmental impact statement, negative declaration, no coordinated review, unlisted action, don't get a type one. That's the Endicott special, okay? So, oh, before I go on, so the green one is what we're supposed to get. That's the type one seeker. That's required by law. Due to, up here, you can't really see it too well, but it says... Because it's 6 NYCRR 617.4B2. That's the, if there's a required zoning change impacting 15 acres. Tonight, they're gonna supposedly rescind that vote, that zoning change, which Lynda Jackson, in her doodle, 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 her world, she calls it adding special restrictions. Actually, it was removing the restrictions. It was removing the prohibitions on incinerators. That's what it was really doing. So total confusion. And if you listen, if you listen to Bill Houston podcast, you're probably gonna be, you're gonna have a slightly less confused idea of what's really going on here. Okay, the green path is what we should have gotten. We're still working on that. So the last show I showed you, I showed you this list right here. And this list is what, all the steps that need to happen before Sun Geel can really get in the door and start, and start operations. Okay? Now, since I made this, I rearranged the order a little bit. I made it more of a chronological order. Some of these were a little bit out of order. So, and I added a couple of things. I found a couple of things that I had forgotten. Okay, so... Keep finding these slides that are taller than my window. Okay. I don't think I'm gonna find any slide bigger than that one. Okay. Here we go. So this is the 15 steps of Sun Geel. That's what I call it, the 15 steps of Sun Geel. And there's a lot, there's a lot they have to go through. There's a lot here. This is not a trivial thing. We have, smash the like button, by the way, if you're watching this, watching it live and say something in the chat. Leave a, leave some feedback if you want to. I'm just gonna share this out one more place. Pardon me while I do this. Share it to a group. And... Okay. 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 All right. So, oh, I wanna do one more thing. One mo. Just in case. Just gonna put it on Twitter. Give me one second, please. Just gonna put this on Twitter. They call Trump Twitler. That's funny. Okay, so let's tweet this. Okay, one more second. I'm almost done. I really can't. Are there people that can really multitask? Like they can, they can talk? And, and, you know, type, have completely different kind of train of... Train of thinking? I just find that hard. Let's retweet this. So just another... Gonna do one more. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Almost done, almost done, almost done, almost done, almost done. How's everybody doing tonight? It's, it feels like it's getting cooler. Anybody else noticing that? Like it? And, oh, sure. Okay, all done. All right, here we go. Let's rock and roll. Okay, so... All righty, so wow, why did I get that? Okay, so here we go. This is, the only place you're gonna find this, friends, is the Bill Houston podcast, because most of this is my original research. Or at least I've compiled this. Like some of these things, like the Aqua for permit. I didn't know about that. And all this stuff I compiled together. But you're never gonna find this list in one single spot anywhere other than right here, friends. So, and I work in the public interest and I really survive on donations and grants. So I appreciate donations in any amount. I really need to raise about $500 urgently and I've got storage I'm gonna lose. My total bills this month are probably close to $1,000. Couple of hundred dollar donations would really be terrific if you can, if you're able to. There's the donate link, tinyurl.com/donate2billhouston. That's my PayPal. And if you don't... You don't do PayPal, there's my snail mail right up there. PO Box 22, Endicott, New York, 13761. Make it out to William Houston. Okay, so this is... This is what, if, if Sun Geel has to follow a completely legal and legitimate process, this is what they gotta go through. This is what they gotta do. So beginning with a type one seeker. So how many times have I showed you the... How many times have I showed you this? That it would, the project was initially misclassified as an unlisted action. It needs to be classified as a type one from the beginning, okay? So that's what this one is. Type one, put it in red. We're not even there yet. Nobody's even talking about this. I just found, I don't know if I have a slide in this. I just found, because I searched for no burn broom on their website. I looked for the word seeker or secre, a couple of different ways. I'm looking for discussion of the coordinated review. I'm looking for discussion of environmental impact statement, public hearings. Those are the seeker defects. And I've been looking, last livestream that I did, I looked and there wasn't anything there. Now there's something there. It's kinda cool. I mean, I'm excited because... Let me just show you this. So... So the one... The one place you can find part of the discussion on the no burn broom website, you gotta give them credit, is they published one of my letters that was in the Press and Sun Bulletin. So that's one place you can find this secre, negative declaration, all the defects, right? That's one place. So, but this is what I just found. This is pretty cool. If we just go to the, we just go to the main page, check this out. This is good. This is good. Cause I feel like people don't listen to me and people ignore me and that mostly is what I find. It could be some kind of confirmation bias. So look at this, they're saying, "What changed between this February 6, 2020, letter written on behalf of the mayor and trustees and the mayor's promotion of this project in March and April?" And what it is, is this is the McCurdich, the McCurdick, McCurditch, sorry, McCurditch. Looks like McCurditch. This is the McCurditch letter. They're featuring the McCurditch letter. And look, seeker. They've got the word seeker right front and center on the page. So no burn broom is starting to acknowledge, I think. They, they don't acknowledge me. They don't point to any of my materials. They point to this McCurditch letter. Now here's the problem with the McCurditch letter, okay? We can call it up. And here it is. And Coughlin and Gerhart, yeah, yeah, yeah. Look for the problem with the unlisted. Look for the word unlisted. Not there, keyword not found. Look for type one. Type one, misclassification. Can't find it. They're talking, he's talking about some, I mean, it's a good letter. I know, I have no problems. I mean, this is, this is a great letter. I love this letter, okay? I don't have any problems with this letter because he covers a lot of ground, okay? God bless Bob McCurditch for this letter. It's pretty missing and inconsistent. He's talking about no local unplanning zoning board for, for the... This is excellent. This is an excellent thing. This is one of the things that I brought up because they glossed over the zoning problem. The zoning problem is key to the type one seeker. Not mentioned here, type one isn't, but zoning is. So that's good. Health commissioner, the health commissioner would be part of the coordinated review, which wasn't done. So he's bringing up the coordinated review. Statement appears false. Okay, wastewater, change in traffic plan. Traffic plan, that should be discussed in the context of an environmental impact statement. He doesn't mention environmental impact statement. Doesn't mention, I think he does mention the coordinated review. He doesn't mention type one seeker. So it's a good letter. It's not complete. No burn broom won't feature my stuff. Go figure, go ask them why. I don't know. I got no idea. Go ask them. Why won't they feature? My stuff is complete. My stuff will tell you the right answer and will tell you all the defects with this thing. I don't know, they shout me down. Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, gotta come back and redo this one. Give me one second, friends. Oh, boy, just doing this on the fly. On the fly. On the McFly, on the Marty McFly. Come on. All righty. All righty then. Who used to say that? Was it Jim Carrey? Oh, well, all righty then. Okay. Type one seeker, that's number one. This is the 15 steps. Type one seeker. That's number one. This is the 15 steps of San Gil. This is all the stuff they gotta go through. Number one, type one seeker. Number two, coordinated review. That's required with a type one seeker. They said they did a coordinated review and they, it was a, was it a lie? They say, you know, Joe Slusar with the, uh, with the DEC says it was a typographical error. Okay, typographical error. Then there is the positive declaration. We need to get a positive declaration. They gave us the Endicott special, which includes a negative declaration. The negative declaration, I have something itchy is on my nose. I've got a hair or something, mustache hair. I'm sorry for keeping on picking on my nose. I'll cut that when I do the edit. Environmental impact statement. Oh, oh, sorry. We're still on this one. Positive declaration. The positive declaration is the trigger for the environmental impact statement. And what, what is the trigger? The trigger is, uh, unmitigated impacts. What's the threshold? How many unmitigated impacts by permanent conditions do you have to come up with? Just one? Just one. How many has No Burn Broom and Concerned Citizens of Endicott together, uh, come up with? A dozen, maybe a dozen. You know, we've got, uh, we've got the traffic impacts. We can get a road use agreement, uh, you know, or forget about that. Let's just talk about the traffic impacts, health impacts, air pollution, water pollution, uh, risk of fires, uh, and explosions. What impacts property value, economic impacts, property value, lock, loss of tax base. All kinds of, you know, could be quality of life impacts. All kinds of possible impacts. What's about the impact of the loss of your form of government? Because you're when your government is captured by industry and the law isn't followed. What's the impact of that? So the positive declaration, all you need is one, one unmitigated impact. We've got about, we've got about this many. We've got a bunch of unmitigated impacts. We should have gotten a positive declaration. That's the trigger for the environmental impact statement. Once we, this is what, this is the whole point of seeker. Okay, I can't stress this enough. The environmental impact statement is the whole goal of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This is what you're trying to get to. Seeker, the environmental impact statement. Okay, this is the gold standard for environmental review, even the federal law. I've heard the federal law copied the New York law. Could have been the other way around, but they're pretty similar. Environmental impact statement. This is what we're trying to get to. Once we get environmental impact statement, we can ask for all kinds of things. We're gonna ask for a road, uh, a road study and a road use agreement. We can ask for a, uh, emergency response plan. We never saw that. We could ask for, uh, human, HIA, Health Impact Assessment. We can ask for a QRA, Quantitative Risk Analysis. There's all kinds of stuff you, you can, economic study, fund the economic study. Did I say that? All kinds of, uh, talk about PFAS nanoparticles, talk about chemistry, all you like. You can go nuts. You can go hog wild talking about chemistry. Once you get to an environmental impact statement. Prior to now, No Burn Broom hasn't been working toward an environmental impact statement. They don't even put it in front and center. They put it off in middle of page three or four somewhere. I don't know. You gotta do a keyword search to find environmental impact statement. You can't find type one seeker anywhere on the website. You can't find it. This is the pathway to, this is the starting point for an environmental impact statement. How come No Burn Broom isn't all over this? When I try to bring it up, it's like, doo doo, we're sorry. The number you have dialed has blocked you as a spammer. Like what? Talk to No Burn Broom, all you people out there. Either talk to No Burn Broom or abandon them and, you know, I'll take you through this, this process here. This is what we need to get through, friends, whether it's the county union or whether it's anything. The county union of my resolution, which we're gonna go over and I'm running, running out of time. I get long winded. We're gonna go over my county union resident resolution that basically asked for this. No permits. Nowhere, not the village of Endicott, not the county union, not the DEC. No, no state, you know, this, therefore be it resolved that we, the town of Union oppose any permits, any further activity of any kind moving toward this facility becoming real until we get a legal seeker process. This is something, even if you're for the incinerator, you shouldn't be for the incinerator with an illegal permit. Everybody should be able to get on board with my town union resolution. My town union resolution asks a strictly, it doesn't say we're against the incinerator. It says we want a legal process and guess what? If we get a legal process, there's a pretty good chance that San Gil is gonna, you know, run away because this is a lot to go through and this is gonna cost them a lot of money. I don't know if San Gil really realizes how much money, uh, this is gonna cost them. Oh, that's ugly. Gotta get my light fixed. I'm not gonna mess with it right now. Okay, so. We're on step four, we're on step four. We're just on step four, okay? And like John Ruspantini said on the call the other night, getting this far, he, we're gonna get to that, but he misunderstood what I was saying here. But he was right in the fact that he said, this is gonna take years. It's gonna take years just to get to this point, number four. We haven't even started on number one. You're gonna see what I'm saying. You don't, you don't, you think I'm lying. We're gonna go through it. An environmental impact statement, a full EIS typically has four public hearings. How many did we get with the Endicott special? Endicott special comes with zero public hearings. We, that's what we got. Endicott special, that's the DEC always gives us the Endicott special. We got zero. We should have gotten four. Four public hearings, scoping, let's go through them. Starting with scoping. Draft EIS, final EIS and the permit, four public hearings. We were gypped. This is all, the number of public hearings is discretionary, but considering all this malfeasance and, uh, and, uh, uh, bad faith and, uh, fraudulent certificates that were issued. I think it's, uh, we should get our full four public hearings. And if you are calling the DEC and talking to Joseph Delu Galinsky or talking to Reggie Parker, maybe you can talk to Basil Segos. I don't know. Or what is it? Marco, Matt Marco? Or Scott E. Seagley? If you're talking to any of those DEC people over there, you tell them, we want a type one seeker, coordinated review, positive declaration, environmental impact statement and four public hearings. And that's one through five. You paying attention, San Gil? You better go home because you're gonna spend a lot of money and you're not gonna get an incinerator here. So if you want to spend a bunch of money, that's fine. Gonna be paying Stephen Donnelly, gonna be paying your attorney, Thomas J. Fusillo from Barclay and Damon, and you're gonna be calling, you know, paying Dale Vommer, you're gonna be paying all these people. You're paying Linda Jackson. Oh, wait, uh, can't say that. Wait, no, no, no. That's unconfirmed. I can't, that's rumor. You're not gonna get an incinerator here, friends, but this is what we need to be at. This is what we need to be asking for. All of us need to be asking for this, friends, four public hearings. They are gonna have to do, see, here's the other thing. Okay, so, uh, four public hearings. Here's the thing, the DEC, people are saying the DEC, uh, uh, rescinded the permit on March, what was the date? March 30th, something like that, March 27th. They rescinded the permit. No. They did not rescind the permit. The DEC, we read on the last live stream, the DEC is saying that Basil Segos says that this permit is valid as long as San Gil can certify that they, uh, there's not gonna be any PFAS within the waste stream. That's a significant enough change. That's not right. He's wrong. Basil Segos is part of this, this racket, okay? This scheme, this, this crime syndicate, okay? That's not good enough. There's gotta be a change in the permit, no matter what, because of PFAS, okay? Basil Segos is trying to say the permit, as long as they have to do a certify, they're not gonna have any PFAS, then they can use the existing permit. No, 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 no. That's not right. You gotta talk about PFAS in the permit. So it's gotta be a modification, okay? Uh, all right. Uh, so that's when they, after they do all that, then they can issue the permit, okay? Then they gotta change the zoning. They're gonna undo the zoning tonight supposedly. I don't know what's gonna happen. It's always a freak show, but, um, they're gonna roll back the zoning change. Remember they had to, prior to May 7th, there was an express prohibition of incinerators anywhere in the village, commercial, industrial, residential. You couldn't have an incinerator. There was an express prohibition prior to May 7th, okay? So on May 7th, what they did was they tried to change, they basically tried to remove the express prohibition on incinerators. Linda Jackson called it something completely, some loopy. She called it adding special restrictions. By the way, adding special restrictions is, is not legally possible due to the 2010 New York State Rechargeable Battery Recycling Act. Go look it up. It's in the law. Adding special restrictions on recycling facilities is prohibited. It's, uh, it's preempted by, by the state. So it's gobbledegook. All that stuff about adding special restrictions is gobbledegook. It's false. It's wrong. It's not legal. So they have to, they had to change the zoning. They tried. I think they realized they screwed up. And it's partly they screwed up because the vote failed three to two. So to keep this thing in play, they gotta pretend like there was some defect and they gotta, I don't know why they're rescinding it. What she says doesn't, you know, the mayor says, we're, we're rescinding it because the, because we're rescinding our special restrictions because this DEC is doing such a good job. That is just wacky. They're not special restrictions. The DEC isn't doing a good job. And it doesn't make any sense because clearly Linda Jackson is still for the incinerator. So why do they want to re-roll back this? The only thing that, there's like only a couple of explanations that make sense to me. One is they basically, they realized they screwed up. Either they screwed up in their, you know, the 239 review was defective for one thing in a couple of different ways. We've talked about that many times. And, uh, they also, uh, according to, uh, Claudia Bramer, the attorney for No Burn Broom, in one of her letters, uh, she said that, uh, she made the argument in her zoning, her ZBA appeal, uh, which is a brilliant argument. She said that basically an incinerator is, is not legal even after they changed the zoning with this, the way they did the wording here. So that I think San Gil and all the people that are for this thing are realizing they screwed up with the zoning. That's why they're pulling it back. But speaking of the protest petition, which is gonna be voted on tonight in 20 minutes, 23 minutes, they're gonna, live stream is gonna start. They're gonna talk about this right here. The five, seven, well, they're gonna talk about the, the Delta report and the protest petition. Remember the thing, 500, according to my estimates, 560 acres is the size of the Endicott industrial zone. So if you change the definition of the Endicott industrial zone to say that incinerators are swell in, in the industrial zone, uh, then, so there was, it's 560 acres. So there's this part of the law that called the protest petition that basically anybody that lives near the zone, this changing definition gets, uh, gets a, a vote. If they can get 20% of the people that, that make up this one, uh, demographic, it's like people that live within a hundred feet of this zone that's changing, then something happens. So that's what they were working on. The super majority requirement for the five, seven vote. That's what this, the whole thing is about. The Delta Engineering Report, the, the protest petition, whenever you hear them talking about any of this stuff, the whole purpose of this thing, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work. A lot of people were involved in this thing. A lot of people, a lot of work. So, uh, it turns out there was already a reason for, you know, there was already a reason for a super majority vote and that's GML 239M paragraph five. And it says basically if there's any recommendations that come back from the 239 review that, that you ignore, then you gotta, you gotta do a couple of things. You have to write a letter to the county. That's six, that's paragraph six. Paragraph five says you need an extraordinary vote, which is, uh, which is half plus one. Which is, which is five, four to one. They got three to two. The vote failed. The vote failed. For some reason, nobody's talking about this except me. I'm the only one. Why would you ignore this story? Basically, if this is true, which I say it's true, it makes sense that it's true. I can show you the law. Why doesn't some lawyer argue this thing? Because what this means is San Gil is dead on arrival. If this is true, San Gil is DOA. It's a kill shot. It's a kill shot, okay? This is a huge thing. No Burn Broom, why aren't you talking about the fact that the five, seven vote failed three to two? Because a super majority is needed due to half a page of recommended, recommended changes by Frank Evangelisti in the 239 review. And let's, let's read that list. It's an important list. It's good stuff. Hats off to Frank Evangelisti, even though there's, you got, you got cheers and you got jeers simultaneously on that thing. But the cheers is that list was super fabulous. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, you know, give my hats off to you because it talks about creating, uh, uh, you know, requirements for site plan review and talking about requirements for shred, metal shredding versus in high temperature incineration. On the money. Number nine, Aqua for permit. I didn't realize this one existed. Claudia Bramer figured this one out or somebody from No Burn Broom. Aqua for permit. Site plan review by the planning board. You know, right now, this is supposedly discretionary by the fire chief? I don't think so. There needs to be a site plan review by the Village of Endicott Planning Board. Guess what? Once they do that, there's going to be triggered a GML 239M review. So there's really gonna be, and this is, the GML 239 is called a coordinated review. So it's really, it's, I think it's, I don't know what the difference is necessarily between the DEC coordinated review, this part of the seeker process and the general municipal law 239 review, which comes from zoning and planning kind of changes. One comes from the DEC down to the county and one comes from the local municipality up to the county. But the 230, as far as I could tell, the GML 239M review, coordinated review and the coordinated review that comes out of six NYCRR 617. I don't know what the difference is. I think they're the same. What are we on? Number 10 and number 11? There might be an additional seeker with the 239M review. 239, this is what, this was the first thing that triggered, uh, the, the defeat in Fenton of the, uh, the bomb trucks terminal. The 239 review is not a trivial thing. It's hugely important. Okay. Building permit. There's no building permit. The demolition permit, the, the earlier demolition, there's a big lawsuit now, uh, between, uh, there's two lawsuits between San Gil and this demolition company called M Cristo Inc. And so big fight, big conflict. San Gil locked out M Cristo. M Cristo's pissed off. They didn't get their stuff that they need to recycle to make their money. They think they lost $500,000. $800,000 job. What? $800,000 job, Bill? Why would San Gil be paying a million dollars for a? a demolition job long before they have a DEC permit? The, the demolition work began December of 2018, 2018. When did we all find out about this? When did No Burn Broom get started? April of 2020? See, that was like a year and a half ago. I didn't find out about it until like a year later, uh, you know, September of 2019 is when I went to that first meeting in the basement of the library there. Okay, so uh, they gotta get the demolition permit, has to be reissued because there was no, let's skip to 15, Certificate of Completion Done. Cause I foiled that and it came back, no records match your request. No, no records match your request. And then here is what I think is the biggie. Biggie, Red Flag Certificate of Occupancy. Uh-oh. No records match your request. Certificate of Occupancy. Now, why is that interesting? Well, because we visited the site. And there were signs on the doors, two signs on two doors that said, welcome, S, Sanjil, we welcome you on the door. And that's, we went to go visit them. And that's when the, the big Huron Fire Truck pulled up and they blew their, their air horn at us and called the cops on us. Like, what? And they're like, we got some protesters here. It's like protesters? What are you talking about? Protest, we're not protesting, you know? They're like, remember the Three Stooges? Hey, you knuckleheads. They're like, or, no, it was, it was, hey gentlemen. They're like, gentlemen, who walked in? There's no certificate. Is this thing on? Hello? Hello, hello, hello? Anybody out there? There is no Certificate of Occupancy. What? Well, Bill, but there's signs on the door. There's signs that indicate that there's somebody in there. Yeah? Yes, there is. Yes, there is. So now let's take you to, I think I got 15 minutes left, if that. Oh, boy. 15 minutes. Okay. So here's my town, Town of Union Resolution right there. And uh, there was a lot of misunderstanding about it. First of all, God bless everybody on that Town of Union Zoom call that said type one seeker, that said coordinated review, that said uh, environmental impact statement, or said my name. I recommend, you know, I recommend, there was three or four or five people that said, I recommend, I want to second the recommendations by Bill Houston of concerned citizens of Endicott, that this is what we need. We need uh, we need these, we need these certain things. So here's my resolution. And I need to write, I am remiss on this. I need to contact the Town of Union and just make sure that everybody understands what's going on here. So first of all, I think that the, the goals of the resolution, I wasn't supportive of the existing resolution because it was incomplete, it was defective, it was wimpy. And it didn't have clear, it didn't have clear goals, didn't have clear performance goals. It was just like, we're, we're against the incinerator. Well, that, maybe you got enough votes on the Town of Union Board for that, but still, even if you do get the, we are against the incinerator resolution from the Town of Union, the point is that there's a lot of stuff that's missing about the seeker process. So my resolution is going to basically identify the problem accurately. That's part of what I wanna do. We, because you're not gonna solve the problem unless you describe it accurately and completely. And to correct the emissions and also give a clear ask. The ask was just wimpy, I think. It's a clear ask, and it's also a ask that's tied to a performance goal. I got that down here. The performance goal is, we're not against the incinerator, Town of Union, you don't have to say you're against it. You can just say, because theoretically, who could be against it if there are zero environment, if it's like no pain and all gain? Who could be against it? Doesn't make any sense. You just don't like, you don't like their face? You don't like the fact that they're Korean? You don't like the name of the, it just seems irrational of it just like, no. So what's the performance based goal? The performance based goal is we just want a freaking legal process starting out. We don't know if, and, and uh, Rick Maderes, this Town of Union Supervisor, he says, we don't have enough information. And I agree with that. I do agree with that. We do not have enough information. What's the process that we all go through? Let's put on our thinking caps here. What's the process that we all go through in order to gather that information? Oh, it's called an environmental impact statement. What's the path to, you know, to the environmental impact statement? It's called Seeker, State Environmental Quality Review Act. Did we get a legal process? No. We got the Endicott Special, zero public hearings. You know the whole spiel. So we wanna focus on the legal process that was denied to us. Our due process rights were denied. Can we put that into the friggin' resolution, please? Now, I had some stuff in there about public relations and about corrupt politicians that brought us here. And I can understand that's kind of inflammatory language they might wanna rule out. But the substance of what my resolution is about is basically this, okay? It's not an anti-resolution. Whereas, we, the Town of Union, let me time check really quick here. Wish I had. Okay, we got 10 minutes. Whereas, Town of Union Board wished to state our strong opposition to the sighting of the Sanjil, and whereas, there was uh, okay. I guess I did ask for a strong opposition, but let's read it. Whereas, there was a, has been an intentional disinformation campaign. Let's skip that. Uh, none of these promoters of the incinerator ever mentioned the high temperature process. The point is, this is important because I didn't put any of the politicians here, did I? Maybe I did. Donald Lupardo, Jason Garner, Governor Cuomo, Mayor Bertoni, all of these people signed onto this gaslighting campaign where they lied to us. And all the media was involved. All the local media, Jeff Plasky, Press and Sun. Some of them did some good reports. There was some good reporting by Fox 40. There was some good reporting by BNG. Overall, all the reporting is pretty sucky. It's pretty bad. And so they never mentioned high temperature processes. There's public relations campaign conflating it with Dr. Stan Whittingham, conflating it with the hypothetical Imperium III. Uh, we were denied coordinated review. You know all this. DEC falsely stated that coordinated review had been done. Notice complete application. Robert McCurdy, material conflict. Oh, they never, they, they failed to identify. This is something that Bob McCurdy put in his letter. I was saying at first, they failed to identify material conflict with local land use laws. Here's the part about the industrial zone. Here's the part about the 617.4B2. It explains that, greater than 25 acres. Requires a type one seeker. Negative declaration, contained errors and false statements. Here's the page two. Among these false statements are failing to acknowledge any of the dozen unmitigated potential impacts. Positive declaration is threshold is just one. Here's some false statements they made. amended, amended negative declaration, false statements, or they at least admitted there's a zoning problem now, but they didn't fix it. So whereas, we were denied our rights, blah, blah, blah. Wherefore, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Union Board oppose all state actions such as issuance of any permits by New York State, Broom County, Town of Union, Village of Endicott, until such time when the DEC complies with all aspects of the law, okay? So uh, anybody that's talking trash about me and saying that I got a uh, I'm working on a different agenda. Uh, I don't know what, I don't know where they're getting that from. So, uh-oh, that's, so that's the end. I'm gonna take a bit of a break and uh, we're gonna join, we're gonna be joining the live stream as it comes up. So just stand by and I'm gonna come back in about six minutes.
All right Ted, can you try your unmute it now?
Yeah. I can, it's coming through my computer now. Ted, can you try to unmute your phone and see if it works?
The host would like to unmute your microphone. You can unmute. You have been muted. And cannot unmute this message. Can you do it off your phone?
As it comes on and turns off.
All right Ted, can you try your unmute it now?
Okay, it says I'm unmuted now.
Ah, there we go.
So, what I did is I allowed the participants to unmute themselves. That's the only way I could figure it out for right now. I don't know what the issue is. So if we could just follow our normal procedures. I don't know if everyone might be able to unmute themselves tonight, but we'll, you know, try to just follow our normal procedures and see what happens from here.
That's how Town of Union does it and then everybody keeps themselves muted by star six. And when they want to talk, they do star six again.
Okay, we'll try to do that tonight and just see if that works. I don't know what the issue is. We've had a few things come up here and some of these things haven't happened before. So hopefully this will, this will work for tonight's meeting.
Pledge of Legion?
Yes.
Pledge of Legion.
Are you, are we on with Sweet or Anthony's ready?
We're gonna say it's that on or no?
Yeah, we could have to ask.
You can leave it off. It doesn't matter where the, okay, we're sit probably pledge of legion.
Pledge of Legion to the flag. United States of America. Republic for which this stands. One nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. And pray we can get over with this pandemic soon. Thank you. Mayor's announcement. Anthony and I went with the IBM groundwater specialist. Take split samples of the groundwater soil samples. Our wastewater supervisor will do some of the testing and send the other ones to Atlantic Laboratories. We will then know if our results match IBM's. The D E C and Broom County Health Department were also there. They, they did 12 of the 300 well sites today. This all started in February when we got a report from IBM saying, one line said, "We're done testing" and I got upset. They called me from Anasys and said, "No, that's not true. We're not done testing. We will not be done testing for a long, long time." And I said, "Then we want to have an independent study." And they allowed us to and we realized we have our own testing group right here in our wastewater department. So we might as well take advantage of that. So we will let everyone know when we get the samples back and what the results are. We have new curtains in the administration building and our old drapes have been donated to an organization who makes sleeping bags for the homeless. And I thought that was something nice people should know. My secretary and I were working with master gardener Terry Doyle, who volunteered her time to help beautify the outside of our building. We're just weeding and planting flowers. Terry brought a lot of flowers of her own for the library. We have then approached about placing a solar farm near the sewage treatment plant. Because of the airport, the FAA will be involved in what kind of panels can be placed there. We're setting up an exploratory committee for this project. And Deputy Mayor Chapman has already taken the seminar on this. And so trustee Connectney has offered to help and we're going to investigate and see if this is something we want to do. We're in contact with the Broom County Land Bank to have at least one dilapidated building demolished. 108 Roosevelt, that one that has the roof caving in. We're negotiating a price because the village really hasn't got much money. So we're going to need the land bank to pay for almost all of it. The Broom County is paying for all the abatement for any asbestos. We don't have to enter into that at all. The owner of the Kmart property has been in contact with Anthony. He may have the building torn down since the village does have the money from Broom County to level it into a brown field. The village has a grant to cover that. Our airport flight school has been proposed. Gerard told Deputy Mayor Chapman that they're almost ready, set to start. She may talk about that more later. And Village Manager Bates and I did a presentation for Endicott Proud on all of our latest projects. We also need to think about, the next meeting is scheduled for Labor Day. We probably should change it to the ninth, that's Wednesday. You're able to make that, right Bob?
Yes.
Okay, because Bob's busy on Tuesdays, but we can make it on Wednesday. So we can have our next meeting on the ninth. And the reason we'll need to decide this is because we're calling for public hearings and we're going to need a date to assign to them.
So do you want to make a motion to schedule a public meeting?
Yes.
On Wednesday, the ninth at seven o'clock?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to change our meeting to, in September, from the seventh to the ninth because of Labor Day.
Second.
Thank you. Now you get to do a, a roll call. That was Deputy Mayor who seconded it.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see, now it's time for city reports. So trustee Connectney, you're first, please.
Okay, I attended the appreciation event for the Endicott Police Department. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. There was about 40 people there from the West Endicott Neighborhood Watch who came down to show their support to the Endicott Police Department. The sheriff was also present. I don't think any state police were there. But it was a nice, it was a nice event. We did have some, some people who had a different agenda than ours was, but we handled it quite nicely and everybody deserved their chance to talk. Linda and I met a girl down there. Her name was Cynthia Taylor. She is very pro-police. She's from Newark, Newark?
Yes, Newark, Jersey.
So she was telling us that she's very active in the underprivileged neighborhoods over by Fillmore, over in that area where there's a lot of kids who are hungry and need shoes and stuff. And that she personally takes it upon herself to help these people out. And Linda and I talked with her and said that there was a lot of things that maybe we could do to help her and give her in some direction and helping these people get jobs or GEDs. It was quite a long conversation with them. So Linda is going to introduce a new committee. It's going to be called the Neighborhood Outreach Committee, which I will be on. And hopefully we'll reach out with Cynthia when COVID ever goes away.
Well, she's coming in now to talk to us.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll, I'll get together with her and hopefully we can make some good things happen for the community, for the village, Village of Endicott. Also on Sunday, Monica and I very sadly had to cancel the Apple Festival. It was just the right thing to do. So Monica and I, well, really Monica, decided that we were going to try to do some music outside of the museum at the porch. And we call it music in the museum. So it was kind of fun. Nino Zamianni and Mark Blackwell played on Sunday. There was about 40 people out there on the lawn, in the municipal park lawn here. And they played for two hours. It was really lovely. It was nice to just sit outside and listen to some music.
Thanks weather, not too cold.
Yeah, and nobody, everybody was definitely social distancing. Yeah, and everybody was definitely social distancing and wearing masks, and it was really a nice day. Now, we have, it's going to be Saturdays from now on, and we are booked through the end of September, like in an hour or in an evening. Monica booked the whole rest of the summer. So people were just itching to come out for no charge, just to come out and play. So it's very nice. I hope that it will continue to be a successful event for us. It's just really relaxing if you're ever out on a, it'll be Saturday nights from now on. The schedule's posted on the Endicott Visitor Center Facebook page, so. And Monica is up and running. She is doing small weddings. She is doing small events over there, and everything seems to be going well for her. People are adjusting quite nicely to the new norm. And she is booking small weddings now. So it's really good. It's a nice event to be partaking with. And that's, that's it, sorry. Thank you. All right, Ted, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I just want to say, it was an honor to join local pro-police, pro-American, pro-American flag people on Saturday. It was a pleasure, a nice day, nice people. There was some issues there, but everybody kept their cool, so that's all I have to.
Thank you. It was nice to see you there, too.
Thanks.
And your brother.
Get him going.
Trustee Chapman, committee reports. Coming up, one of the things that we've been working on is, I've been diligently working on this. Coming up to be, under resolutions, to pass a resolution that we have worked with Broom County on and Dan Schofield from the Town of Union to expand the county, I should say, the resolutions, the State Container Act law. It basically is the bottle bill law. What we want to do is expand that to start adding wine bottles and spirit bottles. One of the things that we've talked about is the high cost of recycling and garbage. And talking with everybody, we figured that about forty percent of the garbage and recycling, the weight is glass. Need to get that out of our system because we are now paying two hundred and sixteen dollars a ton for recycling.
There's a lot of wine bottles out there at the curbs.
Yes, and well, not only just in curbs, but also we found out in trash. Well, I've been getting a few because I've been making some wine bottle lamps. I've been getting a few from some people who have been giving me them. Thank you.
Oh, I can supply you, don't worry.
Okay, actually I need a couple more. So we have a resolution that we would like to, and I've also been talking with Nick from the Badger Redemption Center. He's on the commission, the state commission for recycling, and he is also helping us. And he's going to be getting us names of everybody to send these to on the Assembly and the Senate to send this to. And we're also going to be talking with the towns and villages to get them all on board to also pass a similar resolution to show the Assembly and the Senate that, you know what, we do care and we need to get this taken care of because it's not, unfortunately, it's not just an issue with us. Last time, they didn't get it in in time, the bill in time to the Senate and the state before they recessed. So this time, we were working on that, and they're going to have support from towns and villages because now it's a huge issue with that, with the cost, high cost of recycling and garbage going up. And also, the county is behind it, so hopefully they can get, Jason Gardner can get other county executives behind this and start pushing this so we can get this through and passed. One of the things that we also would like to do is draw a glass recycling company to Endicott. Talked with Chris Palto regarding that, and he's looking into that also for us.
Are we one of the few first municipalities who's going to do this? Or are other municipalities doing this as well?
No, we're asking other municipalities. We've been also working with Dan Scho from the Town of Union also, but we're, that's why we're going to get with the towns and villages and ask the towns and villages also if, we have a copy of the resolution that the county had come up with, and they just need to change it to fit them, like Bob did for ours. And ask them all to try to adopt this resolution and to send it into the state to show support for this. Because we need to, like, there's a huge market out there for recycled glass, a huge market. I've learned a lot by doing this research and talking with Nick and the county. And we have an issue with glass being in our oceans, in our beaches, our rivers, in our riverbanks, our landfills, everywhere. And a lot of that glass, especially your high-quality glass, which is your wine bottles and spirit bottles, a lot of those in good condition when you redemption turn them in for like ten cents, because Oregon is huge with that. And they're a hundred percent recyclable now. They're leading the country in recycling glass. And a lot of that glass is, high-quality glass, it can be recycled and they can recycle it into making, reusing them for wine, wine and also liquor, but the ones that might be like slightly cracked or whatever, those are the ones that can get up and get crushed. You'd be surprised at what ground glass is in, how many products use ground glass. And it's foolish when we have all of this glass available to just throw it in a landfill when companies are actually wasting energy to make glass just to grind it up so they could use it into other products. There's fiberglass, there's tile, concrete, they use it for countertops, there's a variety of things. It's even used, ground glass is used in to make glass products as well. And there's a huge market for ground glass, and we, and hopefully we can tap into that.
Set the trend, yeah.
Set the trend for that. So we've been working on that and continue to work on that. And hopefully we could pass the resolution tonight to show our support for that. The airport the mayor brought up is the flight school. They're working out some little things in the, into the contract, but I believe the parties are getting there and just about happy with that, so hopefully we could see a flight school come in here soon. And Gerard has also fielded quite a few inquiries that people are interested in the flight school as well. Also, hopefully, too, the quotes came in and the insurance company came in for the gas pump. So we'll hopefully get the gas pumps in and done hopefully by next month, so we could go back and start selling some fuel. Also, we had a meeting for the parking authority. We're working on a lot of stuff in the parking authority, and I'll be getting those minutes out. But one of the things is the charging station for the light department that they want to put in for the charging stations on Union, Lot One of the Union Center. The parking authority gave them permission to go ahead and have four slots. We also, the light department is going to go ahead and pay for the striping and the symbol, the charging station symbol to be painted on each fourth spot. The quote that came in was three hundred and fifty dollars for four spots, and the light department says that they will cover that cost. So we'll be moving forward with that, and we've got a couple of public hearings that are going to be coming up to add charging stations to our local code. And also, we've worked on, and Lieutenant Smales found that the parking lot in Exchange and Prospect, which is parking lot number twelve, we needed to add time limits because there isn't one in our code, and we need to add that. That was an oversight when all our parking lots already have time limits. They're either two hours or they're permitted parking only or a combination of both. So for some reason, this is the only lot that we found, so we want to remedy that as well. See what else. We've been just working on a lot of different things.
Village is busy.
Yes, but I'll stop at that for right now. Those are the things that are pertaining to us tonight.
Okay, very good. Okay, Ted, have you got any committees to support that?
Yes, Anthony and Bob and myself met with Roger from Delta Engineering about a week and a half ago on the petition reports. And at that time, there was quite a few mistakes and discrepancies on different places. And we thought we got that pretty well ironed out, but then we got the second report Friday, which still had some problems with it. So we are meeting with him tomorrow, and I think what we're going to do is just have him actually draw on the map where what we agree should be the corrections. The police appreciation event, I thought that was a great idea to have that. Unfortunately, it kind of got overwhelmed by another group, but I think the intentions of doing that were very good. And I was going to ask Eileen, this event at the Visitor Center, how does, how does the public find out about that?
It's on the Facebook page.
I believe it's on the Village.
There's a, there's a new schedule that's posted. It may be on the Village of Endicott.
If not, we should set that out, and maybe if she could send it also to, to.
Candace?
Candace, but also from the page, but also we should think of too, maybe we could sometimes put it in the paper.
Well, why, we got, we're paying two thousand a month for that IT company. Why can't we have these kind of things on our, right on our website?
It will be, if it's not already, yeah.
Just new and we just didn't.
Yeah, no Ted, this just like happened Sunday, so.
Yeah, the rest of it is then.
Moving forward, everything will be very well publicized.
But then on the website, we should also have a place where it tells people where to go to look at the Facebook site also.
Yeah, that's true. I will have Monica get ahold of whomever necessary.
The Facebook page, I don't know how much they really use that because we never monitor it. So it's mainly the website that we are interested in, not the Facebook page.
Okay, I know, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a municipality should be notifying the public through a Facebook page. I mean, it's great, it's good, it's a good way to add to it, but our website is really the place people should be looking at.
I totally agree, Ted. I totally agree.
And those were, that's the three things I had.
Okay, thank you. Bob, do you have anything? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ted?
No, I'm sorry. Is that a question about the agendas? Some people have asked me, they want copies of the agenda for the meeting, but I was reluctant to give it out. Is there?
I thought we were supposed to be putting it online. If we didn't put it online, it was an oversight. We should be putting it online so people know.
Yeah, it's usually on the website.
Yeah, the website, yes. Yeah, because that would be nice if they could follow along. You're right, yes. Okay, well, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just one thing, Anthony and I met with some folks at Verizon Wireless. They're proposing to put some 5G facilities in the village. And there's quite a bit that goes into this, and there's a lot of federal regulation in this area, so there's a limitation on what we can do from a local standpoint, but there are some guidelines that we can put in place. I've got my hands on some guidelines that were prepared by the City of Syracuse, and we're going to take a look at that and present it to the board when it's ready, and we can discuss that next coming meetings.
Is that what Greg, I know I wasn't, I couldn't be here, but is that the information that I sent you from Greg?
I think his name was Greg.
Greg Henley. I'm his attorney.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
And Bob, when you're talking about 5G equipment, are you talking about towers?
No, they're, uh.
That's different.
This is different.
They're not towers.
They're not towers.
They're facilities, they call them small cell wireless facilities. They go on, usually on public utility poles.
They're about the size of, probably about the size of your computer, your laptop. And they go on the side, and they try to match them because we have met with them a few times and talked with them. They try to match them to look and blend in with the utility poles so they don't stand out. And then there is an antenna that goes up at the top that stands up.
Antenna.
Antenna.
Can I show you some pictures of them?
Yeah.
She's so bossish. I harass her all the time. Anthony, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Just a couple of quick things. We had our Main Street grant, New York Main Street grant. We put out a request for proposals for that, for a consulting firm to work with to administer that grant. We had five responses come back, so we're going to be meeting to review those responses and select a firm to work with regarding that. And just to, just to remind everyone, that's the renovations of buildings on Washington Ave from North Street to Monroe. So that first kind of block of Washington Ave. So we'll be doing that over the next few weeks. We also put out a request for qualifications for the funding we received from the Greater Bangton Fund. That includes the gateways, the full avenue, streetscape improvements, and the alleyway and parking lot improvements behind the avenue as well. And we received fourteen responses on that for the RFQ. So we're gonna, our committee's going to have to review those and come up with a selection on that, so when we're going to move forward with, for those three projects as well. We have on the agenda tonight, the Carousel, the Carousel Grant, the roof project repairs. We finally got the authorization to move forward from the state on that. So we have, we have that on tonight's agenda to authorize the mayor to sign that, and we can move forward with the roof renovation there. That's, that was bid out actually last year, and we contacted the construction firm, and they're still holding to their price. So we'll be able to hopefully get that done before the winter.
Anthony, what is going on with the inert of the recycle, of the carousel?
So we, village employees took apart.
Yeah.
The carousel, the, you know, the structure inside. We had to order a couple new parts for that. Those are in, we're ready to put that back together, but we're going to wait till the roof obviously is done first and then, and then put the carousel back. And we had some painting included in the grant, but we decided we're going to do that ourselves to save some money in the grant because we had a couple, the two items we bid came in a little high. So we're trying to save a little money through that grant, and we're going to be taking on the painting ourselves.
I'm sure there's some very artistic people into that issue.
Right, we'll have to just double check too because that's historic, so they have to be painted.
Yep.
Historically correct, and.
Certain paints and certain colors.
Right, and I think that you might want to get with a couple of people that have worked on the, that were on the Carousel Committee many years ago. I bet you they have information on that.
So I think there's some information that we submitted for in the grant because we had to include painting in the grant. So we had to have some backup documentation to apply for.
Nice.
And was awarded, so we'll double check with that before we do anything. And then, and then be able to at least start off with the roof and go back.
Very good. Couple of those parts, custom made.
The other thing too, I've got a lot of questions on Logan Field. We've had, we've reached out to eight different firms, and we finally got our third quote back. So we needed three quotes before we can move forward on that. So I know a lot of firms are busy, you know, trying to catch up from the beginning of the year, so we had a little bit of trouble getting the quotes in. But we just received our third quote on Friday. We'll be reviewing them this week and hopefully move forward with that as well. So that's the concession area repairs at Logan Field. I believe Broom County has started the kayak launch down on Riverview Park.
Yep.
So I haven't been down there in about a week, so I haven't seen any progress since then, but I know they started about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And that's a Broom County project, so I'll have to go check that out.
Under, by the bridge?
Yep, by Twenty-Sixth Bridge, yep. And just a project that we had scheduled in the beginning of the year that got postponed from the virus was the, through our CDBG program, we're going to replace the fence along the backside of the St. Anthony's School. That's our fence, the edge of our park that goes all the way up the hill. We had that planned at the beginning of the year. We're back on the schedule for September, October timeframe, so hopefully that'll be done, you know, in the next month or two here. And that's really it. We're working on some road and concrete repairs. Our street department doing a lot of concrete work this year, so. It's a little bit of a change for us because we usually hired a lot of that out. But we decided, you know, Brett, talking to Brett, the street supervisor, thought we could handle some of that ourselves, so. So we're doing a lot ourselves. We're saving a lot of money instead of having a contractor do it, so. That's exciting to see, you know, and we got some roads lined up for repavement over the next, you know, two to four weeks. So should be seeing some of that in the village.
Seems to be the street department enjoys that, too. It's a little something different for them.
Yeah, they did, they're down at Birdsville. They just pretty much finished up Birdsville. They did a lot of repair work down there. So now the street's just about ready to be milled and paved.
Nice.
So tried to do, you know, I know, I think Wendell's on the schedule. But before we get to Wendell, we have a lot of repair work that we're going to try to get to in between the two street projects.
The tough part is getting the cement truck is booked because there's a lot of people working with that, trying to get stuff done. That was, delayed that project when Birdsville was waiting for the cement truck to come. Birdsill was waiting for the cement truck to come. It got delayed, so a couple of days.
They did a great job, if you're out.
They did, they did a great job.
You could see all the new concrete that's on there.
Yes, cool.
So that's it, that's all I have.
Anthony, I had a couple of questions on the Logan Park, uh-
Yeah.
Is there any cost to us for that, or is that done by the insurance of the, the party that hit it?
Yeah, we're working, we're, we're working through our insurance, so, um, we're working through our insurance right now, who's gonna go back and subgrate through our insurance policy, so. Um, we do have the money to start, start the work, and as we progress, we update our insurance company, 'cause we, all the three quotes we've had, they've come in, they've looked at it. But, you know, sometimes there's issues that happen once you start tearing things out, and you find out there's-
What price range are they in?
The, the quotes?
Yeah.
The estimated damage is around twenty thousand at this point, until, uh, you know, until we get into, um, you know, until we start tearing things apart and see if there's any more damage. But that's kinda where the estimate is right now.
And there's, uh, and the plan is to put something very strong and heavy right there in front of that, where the kids stand?
Yeah, so, I guess to address your question about village costs, the insurance company, as you know, will replace it to pre, you know, pre-accident, um, condition. So, you know, included in the quotes will be the fencing, the guard rail, and then obviously all the, the building structure. What we've talked about is putting a, a cement, concrete barrier there, um, a new, something new. That would hopefully, you know, be a little bit stronger than just that guard rail. Um, 'cause if you get a car coming down, you know, coming down Vermont there, you know, you catch some pretty good speed. So we'll need something a lot stronger than, than just a guard rail and a fence to stop, stop the vehicle, so. So we've thought a cost on our own, which our street department has looked into it, and which they'd be able to do, is put some type of concrete, you know, half, half a wall or something. Like a, a concrete barrier there that's a little bit stronger than what we had initially. But, but to answer your question, the, the concrete barrier would be a cost that we would, um-
Yeah. Now, why, why wouldn't this be covered by, um, the people who hit it?
So, the damage that they caused is covered.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, that part. Oh, that, their insurance will cover ours?
All the damage they caused is covered, yeah.
Okay.
If we go above and beyond and, and put something new there that wasn't there before, that's a cost on us, so.
Yeah. So the other question I had was, what are the names of the streets that we're gonna be repaving this summer?
Uh, I have the list in my office. I, I can, I can send it to you, but I know, just off in my head, I know there's, well, we did Birdsill, so we wanna, we're gonna do Birdsill. We wanna hopefully get to Wendell. I know West Valley's on there, Grant is on there. Um, the ideal alleyway, the Union Ideal Alleyway is, is on our list, um-
Which one's that one? Oh, down on Union, you mean?
In the Union District, yeah.
Union Alley, yeah, okay. Yeah, that needs it real bad.
I believe Walba was on there. I know Pine Crest is on there, but I think Nysig has to get in there before we can pave it. So I, I, I'm pretty sure we're waiting on Nysig for Pine Crest.
Are you just doing the first block?
And I know-
Wendell and Birdsill? Or down to-
Yeah, we're doing, as much as we did on Birdsill, we're doing that same amount on Wendell. Um-
Exciting.
I said Grant, Garfield's on there, and Church is on there. I don't think we'll get to all of them this year, obviously, we, 'cause we did, you know, our CHIPS funding, um, we got our CHIPS funding, but they told us to withhold twenty percent. Um, because they may take it back, I guess, so. So we're going on a limited, uh, budget this year, but those are the streets we have lined up, and we'll, you know, get as far as we can-
When you, when you were saying our guys are doing a lot this summer, is the plan for them to do all of these, whatever we do, is that, is the plan for them to do them all?
The concrete work, yeah, we're doing a lot of the concrete work.
Oh, the concrete, but not blacktop?
Yeah.
Milling and paving is contracted out.
Yeah, milling and paving is, um, is through the county bid, so whoever has the county bid, we use. Uh, but we do hire out a lot of the, um, corners, you know, a lot of the corners for the streets we, we redo.
Yeah.
We hire that out, uh, 'cause that's covered through CHIPS as well, so-
Yeah.
Um, a lot of that is, we bid that out in the spring, and we have a, a company that, that we call for, for that type of work. So a lot of the corners you'll see is a, is a contractor on that.
So when you say concrete, that, obviously that's sidewalks, but is that curbs also when we have to do curbs?
Yep, yeah, we can do, you know, our department can do bo, both curbs and sidewalks. Right now, we're doing a lot of sidewalks. Um, curbs is, um, you know, we can do it, it's just the cost, you know, if it's-
What happens down the alley there?
We try to reuse them there.
What happens in that alley behind the stores in Union? Is that a, would that have curbs or no curbs?
No.
I don't believe there's any curbs there now.
I don't think there's ever been any, no.
Oh, maybe not.
It's just asphalt. And we, we had to repair a catch basin back there, so we did that already. So, like, before we pave a street, we'll go in, we'll check the curbs, the sidewalks, all the catch basins, you know, uh, make sure we repair all those before we, we do the street.
Yeah, and that, that reminds me, I talked to Cameron, Cameron, and they're working on, uh, the catch basin behind Rogers Market. Where the water from that parking lot comes down the hill and goes right across piles of rocks, or every rainstorm, there's a pile of rocks on the sidewalk. But I guess that's in the works. They're gonna do something with that catch basin, and that'll end that problem.
Yeah, Brett went over and threatened their life, I think. Because he was tired of cleaning it up. He said, "I'm not-"
Yeah, I know, I figured that would happen.
Better fix it.
Oh, that, we saw that, that one gentleman in the wheelchair.
Yeah, exactly.
A tumble there, yeah.
So, actually Brett, uh, contacted the state, 'cause that's, uh-
Yes.
The state wrote through there, and they came right out. So he met with them last week, I don't know if it was Wednesday, Thursday, maybe.
Thursday.
Um, the state came out and saw the issue, you know, we're gonna try to, uh, address things on our end, and hopefully the, you know, the state can do what they can to-
Do they have a part in that, that area there?
Yeah, we brought it to their attention, so, you know, if it's, like you mentioned, if the water's coming from our property back there, we can, you know, we can do a weekend on that end, but-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we wanted to bring it to the state's attention that it's, it's an issue, so maybe there's something they can, they can help us out, whether they can do as well to-
Dick Tusk will be very happy. He's been over, going over there for a year with people troubling it.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen it, it's, it, you know, you get some heavy rain, it's, it's a mess.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Anthony?
Yeah.
Uh, if we see a pothole that's, uh, massive, uh, should we call the street department, or?
Yeah.
You call them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can let me know, or let, you can call the street department, Marsha will answer.
And there's a, uh, a street that connects Sky Island to Cornell. There's a pothole there that I, half my car can go down and come out, so I-
Okay.
Gonna follow it up.
Pretty big, so, it's been there a while.
Good.
Okay. Okay. Is it by, is it by the, um, Absolut? Is it near there? Is that the street you're talking about?
Sky Island and Cornell?
Yeah, there's a little street, it's Elliott or something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Down right near Danny's Cove.
Oh, okay, okay, you're down.
Mm.
Okay.
It's right at that intersection, it's quite large.
Okay.
Have Brett go check that out.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's, that's it for me.
Well, thank you. Whenever I go to any meetings, we always take Anthony. I tell everybody, "He's the boss, he's the money guy." Now we know why. So thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
Okay, next we're going to have our public hearing now. Uh, our public hearing is on the cafe permit, so we're all going to, uh, entertain comments on that. We're having our cafe permit, we're actually just revamping this. Um, Deputy Mayor Chapman, would you like to talk on it a little bit, 'cause you're the one who wrote this up?
Um, no, um, well, you, we had a meeting regarding it, uh, uh, Ted and myself and, um, our village attorney. We had some discrepancies in our cafe permit. There were some things that, uh, needed to be changed, where an ad for Village is all in here. And also, um, we had talked about, um, that the music timeframe wanted to be changed, so it's all in here. And that was all changed out. The changes that were made.
When was that, do you know when that was originally passed through? It's like a year ago, what's the number?
That was like three years ago.
Oh, three years ago.
Yeah, it was originally, it was a while ago.
But we hope we can start using it.
Well, we, well, Zach has, but we-
That's good.
Get more, more people.
I agree.
That's the problem.
Okay.
Anyway, if anyone would like to, um, make a comment, uh, on the cafe permit that we're redoing, please, is it the raised hand?
To read it?
Yes, we could read it.
Read the, the whole law, you mean?
No, no, the, um, the revision.
Yeah, maybe just the revision, because we, that's true, people aren't here to get copies.
Sure.
Well, it should've been online, but-
It's really just a changing of about four or five different phrases.
Yes, you're right, yeah. So it's up to you if you wanna read it or not.
I wouldn't.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's just, um-
We should cha, we should read it, because I don't know how they can make comments on it without knowing it.
Talk about the, some of the local laws, the, um, what is, it's, uh-
Section, start with section.
Second page. The second page is, I don't know who's reading it though.
We'll let you read it.
You wanna read it, you wanna read it?
What it is, 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 um, a couple of changes. It says, "To be enacted by the Board of Trustees as fol, as follows. Changing council of the Village of Endicott to the Village Board of Endicott." Um, section two, changing corporate council to the attorney of the village. Uh, section three, changing city to village. Section four, changing fire bureau to fire department. Section five, changing village clerk to village manager, to Anthony. Um, in two different places. And then section six, amendment to section one-three-nine-dash-eight-A of the Village Code hereby be deleted in the entirety and replaced with the following. Upon receipt of the completion of a outdoor cafe permit application along with associated documentation, the village manager, manager, or his or her designated shall forward such information to the code enforcement officers, street department, police chief, fire chief, and attorney for the village. All such documents, uh, departments shall submit their findings and determinations to the village manager in a timely manner. If the permit application is approved by the village manager, the village manager shall notify the applicant. And issue the outdoor cafe permit upon receipt of the annual rental fee and the security deposit. Section seven, amendment to section seven, one-three-four-dash-eleven-J. The Village Code shall hereby be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. No loudspeakers, public address system, or other similar amplification device, or live music shall be played or used within any outdoor cafe area between the hours of nine PM and nine AM. Nor shall such loudspeaker, public address system, or other similar amplification device, or live music be played or used in a manner that creates unreasonable noise, which disturbs the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, or causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensibilities in the area. For purpose of this section, a police officer of the Village of Endicott shall be considered a reasonable person of normal sensitivities. Section eight, remainder, exempt as here above amended to, to remainder of the Village Code of the Village of Endicott shall remain in full force and effect. Section nine, the separability, the provisions of this law are separable of any provision, clause, sentence, or subdivision, word, or part thereof, it, it is held illegal, invalid, unconstitutional, or applicable to any person or circumstances. And such remaining provisions, clauses, sentences, subdivision words, or part of this law, or the application of other persons or circumstances, hereby declared to be the legitimate intent of this local law, would have been approved and adopted in such legal, invalid, or unconstitutional provision, clauses, sentences, subsections, words, part, not a being, included herein of such persons or circumstances which is local law or part of thereof, held and applicable, and be specifically exempt thereof. Section ten, effective date of the local law upon filing with the New York State Secretary of State in accordance with section twenty-seven of the municipal law.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if it was on the website or not, and since I hadn't looked, I, I appreciate your reading it, thank you.
Got a question. The, the rental fee and the security deposit, that's the same as the initial law we passed?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's all in.
That's based on square footage?
Yes.
So, is it, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, if anyone would like to speak on the outdoor cafe permit changes, please just raise your hand, and our administrator will answer you.
How would the people, the people that are on the phone, actually, they're all unmuted, so if they just take turns like Town of Union does, if they do star six, the people that are on the phone but not on the, on the screen?
We'll let Anthony handle it like he did at the last meeting, so-
Yeah, so-
Not the Town of Union.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if anything's different tonight with what, what happened earlier with Zoom, but, um, if anyone wants to speak, do the raised hand feature. Um, I'll see if I can unmute you. If not, you might have to unmute yourself, and then, um, then you can speak. And then I'll go through everyone who's on the, just the phone only at the end. So if anyone wants to speak, you can try the raised hand feature now, uh, and this is on the outdoor cafe permit. Look.
Yep, it's showing up.
I don't, I don't see anyone yet.
Okay.
Um-
Go to the phone.
So I'll go to the phones, or no. Uh, let's see, so I have six oh seven, seven six five, three three four five. Uh, if you wanna speak, you can unmute yourself. Okay, try, um, nine four one, nine six one, four two four four, if you'd like to say anything on the cafe permit law. Okay. And now I have, uh, six oh seven, four two seven, one zero zero two.
I'm okay with the proposal for the, uh, outdoor cafe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the last phone I see is, just says, "Call in user two." So I can unmute that if you'd like to speak.
Anthony, I have a question on these other squares on the screen where there's no picture, but there's a, a name. Are they, are they able to raise their hand, or do you have to click on them?
No, they still, the, the video's just off, but they're, they can still raise, raise their hand.
So that means the video, they're on video then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we had that, um, a couple of times, where there's no video, but you can still raise hand.
So obviously Ted can see this.
Okay, that's, that's all the phones I see, and I don't see anyone, uh, their hand up for that.
Okay, well then we will close this public hearing on, on the cafe permit, and we will continue on then. Thank you very much. Now, we're calling for public hearings on, uh, four other items, and I'll explain what they are one at a time, since we have to use a roll call vote. And for people who don't know, the reason you don't see my picture is my computer's broke, so that's why we're using the, uh, Village system here, because my computer's dead. So the first public hearing we wanna call, and these will be on September ninth, is going to be to talk about reducing the speed limit to UE High School to twenty miles per hour. We had a big MTS meeting and, with the school, and they have requested that. I wrote to the DOT, and they said we need a public hearing to talk to the public about reducing the speed to twenty miles an hour. It's, it's a law, a wide road, people are having trouble getting across, and we just assume not have our crossing guard hit. So we are going to have a public hearing so people can, uh, voice their opinion on the, the, uh, lowering it to twenty miles per hour. So we will have a roll call vote on schedule.
Tell them it's gonna be from, from and where.
Oh, it's only going to be right in front of the high school, from Washington Avenue to-
Uh, Jefferson?
Jefferson, yes, Washington to Jefferson.
I thought it was Le, Lincoln, isn't it Lincoln? Yeah, it's a state road in the-
Are you sure?
That's why I had to go to the DC.
It's, oh, it's Lincoln, it is.
Lincoln, I think it's Lincoln, because it starts, yeah, 'cause it starts because the school starts there, the school administrative building.
Yeah, yeah, Lincoln.
Steve, it's Lincoln to, I'm sorry.
Only Lincoln to Washington, oh.
Lincoln to Washington Ave.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we call for that public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do a roll call on that. Uh, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
All right. The second, uh, public hearing is for voting for alternate for our planning and zoning board. We didn't have them in our, uh, laws correctly, and luckily, uh, we're going to do our laws and making things legal now. So we would like to have a public hearing on adding alternate to our zoning and planning board.
That'll- that's going to have to be two different public hearings.
Yeah, all right, then we'll have two. Sorry.
One for zoning.
Very good. Then we'll have two.
I would like to make a motion to call for a public hearing for the planning board alternate. Okay?
I'll second that.
Hey, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to have a public hearing for the zoning board alternate.
I'll second that.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, the next public hearing is we want to hear people's opinion on putting in those charging units. Our- they're already bought for by a grant. The electric department is in charge of it. Our electric department is its own entity, so they will take care- the responsibility of putting them up and maintaining them. And we would like to have a public hearing on putting in them.
I'll make a motion for that.
No, it's- the motion is to add, um, electrical charging stations to the local, uh, code for parking lot number one.
I'm sorry. I did not realize that's what it was for. Okay.
Yeah, we have to add that because now we have to add it to the local code that those parking stations are going to be designated only for charging stations, those four spots. So we have to add that into our public code, so if another car parks there, it can be enforced. Am I right?
Don't they take up two- two spot seats or something like that?
Yeah, it'll be four altogether, correct?
Yeah, two charging stations. That's going to be like in the middle of the two, but each charging station does two- two lots in it. And then, um, the, um, they're going to be, uh, striped. And the, um, light department is going to pick up the cost for the striping. They're going to be- they just did this in Binghamton, so they have the, um, the- the symbol already. The stripes are going to be yellow, and then on each charging station is going to have the charging station symbol painted in green at each spot. And, uh...
So this is on the little s- street behind Key Bank, going towards Day- Day Place, I think, right?
Correct, yes. Yep. Right, right. Um, I believe you, uh, got the picture in- in your packet of where they would want them to go.
Right, right.
And the light pole is right there, so they're going to tie everything and electricity all into that pole right there. So I make a motion to call for a public hearing to add electrical charging stations to the Union Center Parking Lot number one.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
All right. And the next one is the lo- amending the parking, the two-hour limit on parking lot number twelve on Prospect Street.
Prospect and Exchange.
Prospect and Exchange.
I make a motion to call for public hearing, the local law amending chapter two thirty-five, adding two-hour limit parking for the parking lot number twelve, Prospect Street and Exchange. I'll second that.
Okay, do a roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, all those public hearings will be on our new, uh, time of September ninth. Right now, we would like to have the approval of minutes for September, July twentieth.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I had a change- I had a change for those minutes.
Okay.
Um, there was a- a motion and a second and a vote on, um, allowing the public to speak at the first hearing of visitors at that last meeting, and that's not in the minutes. And it was voted down three to two, but that is not- that needs to be put in the minutes. So...
Then we will- we can vote on these- these minutes with that, um, correction. I do believe...
Yeah, I'd like to- I'd just like to hold it over and get it in there and then vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Do that, sure.
Because then we'll have an official piece of paper that shows that it happened.
Okay.
Ted, do you remember what part of the meeting that was on?
It would have been right there between section five and section six.
Five and six?
Because that's where it's always been.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we can do that.
And then while we're on that, I might as well just do this one. It's, um, I would like to add this first hearing of visitors back into this meeting tonight, which would go right there, right now where we're at.
Can't do that tonight. It's not on the agenda. We'll have to do that when it's on the agenda. You'll have to have it put on the agenda for another time. Like you said...
You didn't put it on- you did not put it on the agenda when you took it off the agenda. You just eliminated it out on your own.
Well, you reminded- you just reminded me that we need to start going by the agenda, and I am doing exactly as you requested, and I agree with you. So we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you very much. Now we can go to the bid.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Will it be on the agenda, or is it going to be on the agenda to vote on it?
It'll be on the agenda to vote on it, because it's not on the agenda to vote on it tonight.
So we never voted to eliminate it off of the agenda to start with.
All right, well, let's- we'll- we'll talk about that next.
Ted, I'm now following you. We have the hearing of visitors on the agenda for tonight.
Yes, we do. Oh, yeah, we have a hearing of visitors tomorrow.
We've had, um, yeah, about- for fifty years, we've had two hearing of visitors on each meeting and on each agenda, and it's the same as Town of Union. They also have the same exact thing. But this first one has been eliminated, Linda eliminated it unilaterally a month or two months or whatever ago.
No, we voted.
And there was no vote on this.
We did. We voted on it when we made up the rules. But- but I'll tell you what, you can put that back in on the next agenda. And- and right now, we'll go on to bids.
To vote.
Yeah, to vote on it, to vote on it. Yes, we can vote on it.
Well, we know how that vote's going to go.
Okay, now we got to go on to the bids. Here it is. Found it. A motion for- for Phil Grayson's bid.
I'll make a motion for Phil to receive bids for the purchase of a backhoe for the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yes, uh, yes.
Now we have communications for filing. H. Motion for communications for filings, A through H. I'll second that.
Okay, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Now we have communications for action. The first one is a contract renewal for the leachate treatment, for the wastewater treatment plant. So can I have a motion?
I may take a motion to accept, I'm sorry, Charlotte, to accept the concrete- contract renewal for the leachate removal of wastewater. And that's with the county.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Anthony, can you explain what that is, actually?
So we, uh, Broom County, um, did a project a couple of years ago where they, uh, ran new lines, uh, from the end of our system up in the landfill. And the leachate is the treatment of- so as- as rainwater and waters fall through the- the landfill, it's collected. Um, that's- that's the leachate there, and then that's sent to our system. It's pre-treated up at Broom County, and then it's sent to us. And it's metered, so we know how much- how much they're sending us. And they do have a holding pit there as well in case we're, you know, in case we can't take it.
That's the, uh, this is from the Broom County landfill?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know about how much of that?
We tied into the system there.
Yeah.
On farm- you know, we- on farm to market, they tied in and then ran- ran it all the way up to the- the landfill and the airport.
Do you know about how much comes down through there?
How many gallons?
Yeah, or however they measure it.
Yeah, they do it by gallons- gallons per day. I don't know. I don't have the amount off the top of my head. I- I'm sure I have it in a folder somewhere, but I just don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay.
Uh, Phil- Phil can tell you.
I'm sure Phil will have it exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But we do, obviously, we receive revenue for it as well, to- to the wastewater plant.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
In dollars.
How much do we got?
It's- it's in the- the resolution, the- the dollar amounts in the Broom County resolution. But I can read it. It's twelve dollars per thousand gallons for those discharges to the Endicott facility in excess of seventy percent of the total monthly leachate production from the pre-treatment facility. And then it's thirteen dollars, uh, for this, for the, uh, total discharges to Endicott facility greater than fifty, but, uh, less than or equal to seventy. And then it's fourteen for thirty to fifty percent, and then fifteen dollars for, uh, thirty or less.
Okay, okay, good. Thanks.
Yep. It's on the back of that first.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just noticed it.
Okay, now did I... Did we have a second on that?
I did. I seconded it. Thank you.
Second, okay.
So, uh, do the roll call. You got trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, the next one is on our carousel roof contract.
I'll make a motion for the carousel roof contract from A one construction.
Yeah, do a roll call. Uh, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yes.
All right. The next one is our contract renewal for the Greater Binghamton Airport.
And then, actually, that was the other one, Anthony. If you could explain that a little bit.
So, um, this is a renewal too. Um, a few years ago, we entered into an agreement with Broom County to handle their de-icing fluid, um, for the airports at the, uh, at the airport there. So this is a contract with Broom County to handle- handle that fluid at our- our facility.
And does that come down by truck or down through the pipes, or how does that come down?
Yeah, I was just thinking that as you asked that question. Um...
That came down.
I- I- I want to ask Phil to be sure, but I know we're tied in to the airport. Um, you know, our system is tied...
That's probably not even- it's probably not treated up there, so I would think it would have to come down by trucks.
Yeah, I know- I know we are tied in, um, obviously, uh, our wastewater system is. Let's see, and water collected in the aviation fuel containment areas at the Greater Binghamton Air- Airport. So this authorizes the agreement with the Village of Endicott.
Um, for thirty dollars.
Yeah, to- to take care of that, uh, fluid.
Per count, so...
I could- I could find out. I don't know if that's trucked down or if that's run- ran through our- through the system. I could try to find out.
Do you go to Casa?
I would- I would think, uh, well, I don't know. Does our sewage treatment plant get to treat stuff like that?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, we're capable of handling.
Oh, okay.
Why put all those big upgrades in there that we did with...
Mm, check here. What's up, guys, too?
Go ahead.
We're backwards again.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, dude.
Right.
Just a quick question. I see on this Janus, I think the tax bill of forty thousand, four hundred dollars. You know, that went out to a bid, three bidders, and that's the fifth.
Well, it- it went out to bid, so we- like, if you get quotes, you need the three. If it goes out to bid, it could be two, it could be ten that bid on it, and we just go with the qualified bid.
You know, being in the insurance field, I've got computer programs that can tell what everything should cost, no matter what the, you know, any kind of roof, any kind of...
Okay.
Who checks and sees if, uh, a bid comes in and it's still way high and out of line, but it's a low bid, ooh.
Well...
How do we check it?
We actually did the, um, so there's two projects that were part of the carousel. It was the roof replacement and the windows and door replacement. So we- we actually bid- we bid the doors and windows twice. We bid it once. It came in really high, according to the, uh, architect consultant on the- this Janus and Anderson that we deal with.
And the, uh, consultant tells us.
So he said, you know, "This is really high. Let's- let's rebid it." So we rebid it later on, and it still came in high. The- the- it was higher- it was more than the grant amount allowed, because we had estimates going into the project.
It was like grant?
Yeah.
The ones they're passing?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Well, it's still- it's still okay, but...
Yeah.
The grant money comes from somebody that might be getting ripped off.
Well, that's a good point, though.
But that should be the architect that should be checking on that type of stuff that you pay the consultant for. He should- hopefully, he's checking on that.
Because when- when we apply for the grant, we have to get- we work with the con- the architect, and- and they give us the- the estimates for each item we want to have done, and then that's how we come up with the budget for the grant. So like, they'll say, you know, "I'll pick on the- the windows here for that. We'll save fifty thousand dollars for the windows and doors for the carousel." But when we bid it out, the both bids came in close to ninety. So that was so far above what- what the budget was, we had to eliminate that project from the grant. Um, and then, you know, we bid the- you know, this was close. I think we had- I think we had about forty-five to fifty pounds for the roof. So this one came in ad budget, and then the other bid I know was considerably higher. I think it was seventy to eighty, in that range, so... I think there's only two that I remember of the projects. Yeah.
I would gladly- gladly have you checked.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt.
Carousel.
Might as well check. Might just come in really handy there if they...
Hey, yeah, we haven't checked out. Save money, save money.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
So the, uh, the de-icing fluid comes through the system. It's not trucked down. It's- it's through the system.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Always good to double check.
So do we have a...
I like saving money.
Motion for the airport contract?
Uh, we, um, I'm sorry. I thought you'd- she...
I didn't write it down.
Okay. Um, I'll do it.
Motion. I'll make a motion for the contract renewal for the Greater Binghamton Airport de-icing fluids contract.
I'll second.
Roll call. Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Okay. Now, the next one is the appointment of Larry Copla to the planning board committee. Ordinarily, when somebody retires, I simply appoint them. However, because Richard Greco was on the planning board, but he didn't live in the village, uh, we decided that it would be better to vote on Larry tonight since we did not- since he should have been voted on in January if we were going to put him on.
Right.
So to replace Richard, uh, if anybody else retires, I can appoint, but we're going to vote on Larry tonight. So I would like a motion to put Larry on the board.
Yeah, before we do that, I would like to also, uh, if you look back at John Bertoni's, uh, letter from the last meeting, that he was suggesting that, um, Richard was a very qualified, very- I think that's why we wanted him on there, because he's very- very good, got some very good talents for us. But if you can maybe talk to him and see if he would be in a- stay on as an advisor to the planning board?
Yes, he's already agreed to that. Yep, he's already agreed. In fact, I do believe that Richard prefers that. I think Richard kind of likes the- the laid back, being laid- laid back a little bit. Um...
Yeah, because there's no village requirements. There's no village residency requirements for that.
Nope, and- and he's very happy with that, so that's why...
Okay, good.
He's very on.
Expertise in that, so he could be like a- an advisor consultant.
Right. Right, right, and he's still on our water board, so we still have Richard, we don't let him go very easy, but tonight it's for the appointment for Larry, and I would very much like to have that, and I leave.
I'll make a motion for, to approve Larry.
Okay, I'll second that.
Very good, okay.
Um-
Welcome back, Larry.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. All right, now, the next one is, this I don't know, Springbrook Software Renewal Contract, oh, for fully KBS, for our software.
We gotta get rid of that KBS, that's horrible and awful.
Really?
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, still working with Edmunds, it's fully-
Fully, yeah, you know.
Um, get it in there, but, I mean, we're up in September, so, um, you know, our, our stuff is up in September, so we have to stay with them for, until Edmunds is, is fully onboard.
Okay, okay.
So, I make a motion, Springbrook Software Renewal Contract, I'll second that, till September.
Do roll call, did Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
And Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, the next one is to authorize our Chief Gary for hiring two additional policemen. The only reason we are doing this, not to add to our force, but replacing, we have two people who are, uh, leaving, firing, uh, going into another position, I believe.
Well, should this be authorization? I think we're gonna bring this up, because-
Okay, is that what it was? 'Cause I, I was surprised to see it, I was gonna just bring it up under business.
Yeah. I wanted to-
I thought we were ju- just discussing-
Yeah, 'cause we-
Okay, why don't we change this for new business, then?
Yeah, for, just while we're on the topic, for the, for the budget this year, we added two peop, two new officers, because we're anticipating retirements.
Mhm.
So, you know, we didn't, we didn't agree to, to have two, two officers permanent, we just were anticipating the retirement, so we're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit. Um, so we've, we've had those two leave, one retired and one, um, actually is, is, is gonna be, um, done at the end of the month. So, the two we brought on initially are, are, get us back to our normal levels, so I don't know if you, you know, with the state we're in now, with-
No, we've got two additional-
We have two more leaving now.
We're leaving.
Yeah, so we had two come on, in, before the budget.
Mhm.
We're two, we were two ahead, where we normally were, so-
And then sure, like-
I'll just pick numbers, if we're, we're normally at twenty-eight-
Uh-huh.
We went up to thirty.
Mhm.
And, I, I don't, those numbers aren't correct, but-
But that's close.
Yeah, so we went up to thirty anticipating, you know, two people are gonna leave, and the two new, uh, recruits in the school are gonna take their positions, so we've had, that has happened, so as soon as those two are done with the, the school, they'll fill the two positions that are vacant.
But we now, we've got two additional that are leaving.
I have-
Right now?
Yes, we do. What we should do is, would you, would you like-
We don't have anyone leaving now that I know of.
Would you like to have, on the September ninth meeting, we can all be thinking about this till then, and have Chief Gary come in and explain?
Yes, yeah.
No, there's, there's a couple next year that are go, that are, are retiring.
That's what you're talking about, he wants to start planning ahead, he wants-
We have to ask the board ahead of time.
Yeah.
Interview process, uh, it takes so long, and he doesn't, like, last time, he was kinda under the gun, and he almost missed out on, uh, a couple of people.
Yeah.
And so he liked to start the, the process sooner, so he, he's not, he, he's not trying to push things through at the last minute, 'cause, you know, between, um, the interview process, the, uh, testing, and the physical, and all of that, so he, he just wants to know if he could just start looking a little sooner, 'cause he knows that there's two that are gonna be up and leaving.
Well, plus, there's only one school, I think, per year that they can go to, so-
Correct, that starts April.
Yeah.
Well, that's the Broom County School, there's other schools available.
There's one in Albany.
Yeah.
We sorted it out, Ira.
Syracuse, there's-
So, these other two, do you know the day, the months when they are leaving, uh, next year?
I know there's, uh, February, there's, there's one that's eligible, I know there's one eligible later this year, um, I know there's two in February and one in May that are eligible, doesn't mean they're, you know, guaranteed to leave, but they're all-
So, then if he got two new people, they would start the school probably next April, so we'd really be down two while they're in the school, and that takes six or eight months, I think.
Yeah, this is nine, nine months, that's true, takes a while.
So, it sounds like the timing, sounds like he's got the timing pretty well.
They're gonna have to rush.
Then, then they, then they're partnered up with, uh, another officer for, uh, was it six months, something like that?
Three, you're right. Once they're done with school, it's three.
It's three months after they're done with school, yeah. So, it's, it's almost a year process before they're actually out on their own, once we actually-
Linda, do you know if he was, if we do this, would he be hire, when would he want to hire these two? Well, he can't hire them, so they go to school, right?
Right, correct.
I think he's looking for a transfer as well, which would start immediately at a higher grade.
He actually just wants to look right now, Ted, he, he's asking permission to start looking, but, but-
I don't think it's necessary to have to bring him in.
Okay, well, I, I was gonna say, if that's what people want-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think what he does is he just wants, just wants permission to go ahead and start looking.
Mhm.
So, permission, not authorization.
Very good.
Permission for-
I like that, that sounds good.
How's that? I know we strike authorization and put permission in there.
I think that sounds good.
And I'll make a motion.
Well, wouldn't we just, uh, wouldn't we even just wait on this until he comes in at the next meeting?
I don't think it's necessary for him to come in, to him, for him to come in.
Nobody wants him to come in?
I don't think it's-
Or you just wanna go ahead with this as it is, then?
It's pretty-
Only to look.
Right, it's just to, to look.
Not committing, we just want him to, to, to look into it and-
To be able to open the book and see who's out there.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Good.
All right, there you go.
Can I have a second on that?
What was the new wording that you were gonna change this to?
Right, I, I think we have to be clear on what's being voted on, 'cause the, what it says here is hiring additional policemen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was put in correctly.
Correct, you're right. Permission for Chief Gary to, to investigate-
To investigate, that's the word. To, um-
Initiate, maybe.
Initiate, yeah.
Yeah, um, to pull in-
Just pull the transfer list, just look at the transfer.
Yeah, to pull the, the transfer list and to look and, and see, and maybe see what's available, and maybe even start some of the interviewing and see.
Do you have a good, uh, sentence to do there, Bob?
I was just gonna ask him that, too.
Yeah, I mean, it could be permission to authorize, um, it, it would be authorization for Chief Gary to begin, uh, the recruitment process to additional policemen.
Mm. Mhm, good job.
There we go.
There you go, thank you.
I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Uh, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
All right, now, the next one is Charles F. Johnson, application for a New York State Public Library construction grant for our library, sent in by SASS.
For the roof.
Yes, I just look and see what, yes, I've read these for, in a while.
We keep our fingers crossed that we get it, because these have been getting more and more competitive.
Ah.
These library grants.
Wow.
Being that I'm on the board for the library, I'm going to make a motion to accept that.
Very good.
Second.
Do you have a roll call?
Yes.
Connectney, Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now, we are going to pay some of the bills.
Um, I did talk to, um, Janice regarding the bills, and the reason sometimes that we've get the one section later is because the, um, the way our meetings fall now, um, the, um, because usually our meetings on Tuesdays, so it wasn't that much of an issue to get the exact set of numbers in in time for our meeting, but now that the meeting's switched to Tuesday, those, uh, accounts are reconciled until Friday, and then Joyce has to input them from the report on Wednesday, uh, on Wednesday, on Monday morning, mid-morning, Janice doesn't get them until mid-morning, um, and so then that's when she has to add them to the, uh, to the agenda, but that's the reason for them being late, is, uh, because, uh, these are all were set up, the accounts receivables were set up beforehand, but now with the meetings being changed to Mondays and Tuesdays, that's the reason why we've been getting them late on Mondays.
So, we have three different accounts payable to them.
Do them separate?
Probably have to separate, don't we?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I make a motion to approve accounts payable from July twentieth.
I'll second that.
Roll call that one?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to approve the accounts payables from August third.
I'll second that.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner? Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Motion to approve accounts payable from August seventh.
I'll second that.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
That's my favorite part of the meeting.
That's true.
Sure.
I didn't hear my name, but I'll say yes.
Yeah, but I-
Very good.
(laugh)
Yep, okay.
Okay, now, we have the protest petitions, but as Ted has mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, they still are not ready, uh, we've been dealing with this for two months, we're really not very happy to have to postpone this again, and I really apologize, none of us are happy over it, um, and when, and when Trustee Warner and Bob and Anthony look at it tomorrow, I'll be in the building then, I have, I have to go out, but they are going to tell them that we want a date on this, we have to have a, a firm date when this is gonna be done, and done correctly, so that's how we're going to handle this, so I'm sorry we can't vote on that tonight.
Yeah, to their credit, it, it's, it's a very, very unusual thing, project for them to work on, or any engineer to work on, and I wouldn't doubt if, there's only one of these kind of, uh, studies per year in the entire state, so it's very unique, very, and very complicated also.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now we're going to our Returnable Container Act, um, would you like to explain that?
It's, um, the resolution urging New York State Legislature to increase recycling and reduce municipal waste management costs by expanding the New York State Returnable Container Act. And basically what it is, is we want to add the, uh, empty wine bottles, spirits, and beverage glass containers compromises an estimated ninety thousand tons of curbside recyclables statewide. Such empty glass bottles are economically viable to recycle as part of curbside recycling programs throughout New York State, the bottle break and become contaminated with paper, plastic, and other non-glass materials at local recycling, recovery, and sorting facilities, and then they become useless. Um, so basically what we wanna do is we wanna, um, add that to the bottle bill. It's also, people might known it, known it as the bottle bill, too, it's also known for the, as that, and it will, um, other, several other states have recognized this, um, uh, we have, uh, California, Iowa, Maine, Vermont, uh, and there is also, uh, Oregon, and there's quite a few others, but they did, did, they just added some in there.
I appreciate you going through the trouble of working with the Broom County on this, and, uh, I, I do think that, that the town of Union's gonna be in on this, because Danny was very excited about it.
Yeah, well, Danny's been working with us with-
Yeah, so it's wonderful.
And all for this, since we all find out how much the kids cost us for recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Ten dollars a ton.
Well, may I have a motion for this?
Make a motion, uh, authorizing, uh, the mayor to sign the resolution for the, uh, Returnable Container Act, is the resolution urging New York State Legislature to increase recycling and reduce municipal waste management costs by expanding the New York State Returnable Container Act.
I'll second that.
Hmm.
Roll call?
Please.
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Very good. Now, we come to our resolution for our cafe permit, to make our correction. Since you already have read this once and discussed it, I think we could just make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion on the cafe permit changes. Second.
Roll call, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay, now, we won't be able to vote on the, the recycling facilities, 'cause we haven't got the petitions yet, but hopefully at our next meeting, when we get the petitions all straightened out. Now, we come to our unfinished business of our light contracts. Now, did, did you wanna explain that to Chad?
Um, basically what this is, it, it's not anything to do with, um, a, a percentage type raises, what it is, is we've been, we've lost two good linemen to NICEAG, and when Chad looked at this, um, for, um, classifications and pay scale, the village is very, uh, is very low in the pay scale compared to NICEAG and a couple other, um, uh, light supervisors and foremen's and, um, linemen, so he wants to just make sure that, that we're in the same ballpark as, as, uh, NICEAG, and also what this is, is the, in here, is that we wanna put in here that if we make the investment in, uh, to train a lineman, which takes, I believe, was it five years, um, that the village will be reimbursed back, that money compensated back for the, um, the training, so that's also part of this, uh, resolution also tonight, is, um-
Who is paying us back?
It would be, it would either be the, the, the-
Linemen.
The, the linemen themselves, or the company that they go to, just like we do with the police station.
I, I get it, got it.
If we, uh, like, that one time, we got that one transfer, and we had to pay a wego, I think it's like eight thousand dollars of his training.
Yeah. Right.
Uh, same thing, that same idea that they wanna, uh, implement that same system in the, um, in the light department, and that's what this is, also is in, is in there, that pay scale.
So, they're asking for, uh, ten percent increase on any new guys, plus the existing guys, right?
And we're going down to five from six, we're eliminating one position, so we're actually gonna be, they're gonna be saving money, actually.
Actually, the budget savings, um, by doing this, and what the, the, they took in place is gonna be twenty-five thousand and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents, is gonna be a budget savings.
Because we are dropping down one guy, is that what we're doing?
Yes, and the, um, electric department, the elec, municipal electric is its own entity, it doesn't come out of the general budget anyway, so it's actually their own little segment.
There's, is there, is there any good-
Yeah, but it's, uh, it, it matters just as much, though, 'cause the public, the residents pay for it.
Oh, yeah, so we keep our bills.
So, we're gonna drop one guy, we're gonna raise the rates, their rates ten percent, and we, uh, say, how much, Cheryl, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Okay.
That's a win-win situation.
Okay.
I, I missed the meeting, um, the Light Commission meeting, but did anyone bring up, I, I, you're looking at the rate, is the one item.
Mhm.
Did anyone look at what, like, Package NICEAG offers to the package we have? So, maybe we're less-
They never talked about that.
You know, we're less, we're less hourly rate.
Chad never talked about that.
But our, you know, our, our insurance, our pension-
Benefits. Uh, we did talk about it.
Happens safer, the, a few dollars less in hourly rate, you know, 'cause I don't know what, I don't know what NICEAG's packages are, so, you know, like the whole-
Um-
Yeah, I mean, usually this is part of collective negotiations, and it's part of the, the union negotiating process, it looks like this is being done outside of the context of a, of a bargaining.
Right.
Yeah.
Of, of a typical renewal of collective bargaining agreement.
Mm, correct.
Right.
So, that, that's a, that's exactly the kind of analysis you'd wanna do.
Mhm.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't, I mean, I don't know if it went, I think it's, that, or, I was just curious.
Yeah, um, no, it, actually, it actually, that, that meeting was sparsely attended, um, but that was not brought up.
Yeah.
So, should, should we table?
It has talked about it, but they can say that, that, um-
I was just curious.
NICEAG has been, actually, uh, what happened was, years ago, it was NICEAG people who go to municipal, now the roles are reversed, NICEAG up their fee, up their, everything else, their pensions, and their healthcare, NICEAG is, has excellent healthcare, and they have healthcare for life, whereas the village, we don't, it ends at sixty-five.
Well, no, they, the former employees are covered for life.
Right, but not the new ones, but-
Oh, the new ones are covered.
For life?
Mm.
Oh, okay, I thought we changed that.
Sixty-five, they just changed plans.
Yeah, they changed that, yeah.
They go to the actual plan, to the, to the, to the-
Yes, but they go to, yes, 'cause they go to a lesser plan, yeah, so, but, um, if you're talking about, did, did they talk about an analysis comparing the two, like, you just mentioned, I have, uh, that's, they did not bring that up at that meeting, um, I have not gone to the other meeting, so I don't know what was discussed.
Is that information available from NICEAG?
Yes, I believe Chad had all that, he had papers in front of him, so he might have all of that.
Yeah, because he's done all this-
Because he's done all this work and that's why he's telling-
He's done, that's how he knows the comparisons because he compared, he said he compared everything through NICEAG, and this would, this would bring us up closer to NICEAG, but not exactly to NICEAG sta, standards.
He, he didn't feel-
His main thing also is getting, uh, we don't have in place, but we, but this will put this in place, this agreement, is the payback for training. Because right now, we just got, we just had two, two gentlemen leave to go to NICEAG that we spent all that money on training for the last, one was what, three years? With us for three years?
Yes, he was almost, almost ready.
And the other one was, was maybe two, I think. They, they came in close together, and, uh, we spent all that money, time training them, and now they're going to, to NICEAG making a heck of a lot more than what they were making here. And what we want to do is get some of that, um, cost back.
Isn't there any way that we can protect ourselves a little bit better on that? That's what this is doing.
That's what this is doing. That's what the agreement is doing.
I know, but in writing, like-
That's what it will be, that it will be in writing. It'll be part of the contract, part of their hiring.
Ah, okay, I get it.
It's going to be part of their har, well, contract, part of their hiring, but, um, but you're the village attorney, if you want them to write it differently and then put all of that better.
But there's one thing you don't know, I forgot some information on this. NICEAG is ready to hire more and they're looking at our guys. That's why Chad's getting nervous.
Yeah.
Because NICEAG is more-
Does this, uh, I don't, maybe it's on here, but I'm, maybe it's on here, but I don't see, does it, do we know when this would take effect?
Um, I believe it would be right away.
Well, we need to know, we can't just, we need to see it in writing.
So, there's some urgency.
That's what I'm asking, um, the attorney about, if he wants to put in legal ease.
Yeah, I just think we need a better written document. What, what we're looking at here doesn't say anything about, uh, an agreement, uh, regarding training expenses. This is just-
This is not, this is not the one. He gave us that one. This is, it's not in here.
All right, well, what we have in our file is just a ten percent raise for the, the linemen.
Right, and that's why I'm asking, we should go ahead and we should have that written up better.
Uh, so I think we need a better idea, uh, yeah, so I drafted this back in-
Mm-hmm.
February or something.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I think we need a better idea of exactly what he's proposing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, it looks like there's a reduction of, of, from six linemen to five, but is that part of the agreement?
Yes, it is.
So, are we abolishing a position?
Yes, we are.
Okay, well, that doesn't, that doesn't say that.
Well, that has, this paper is not what the paper that we should be having. We should have what she has. And that's what I'm saying.
This is from our last, our last mon, our last meeting is why I have that. I put it back in here so I have it today.
All right.
We don't have that package.
Do you want to have that position abolished as part of the-
Bargaining agreement.
Well, in there. Uh, it's not something I would negotiate with, with them because the village has the right, the universal right to abolish a position, but I, I think we need to understand the full picture of what, what this deal is, because right now it just looks like a ten percent raise, and usually that's something you do in negotiations, you get something in exchange for a pay increase, and I just want to make sure we're, we're doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, shouldn't this be pretty much kind of like a contract, uh, Bob?
Yeah, right, something more formal and written.
That's what I'm asking him, to have it more formally done.
And, and there are also repercussions, um, which we could talk about, but, you know, when you give one group of employees a ten percent raise, that can affect other groups of employees as well.
Yeah, because isn't street locked in with light? No, you don't understand that, now, the street department is its own entity, so another bargaining unit can't say, well, the street department did it becau, or-
Got it, I get it.
Because they, they're not part of the general fund.
Different fund, okay.
Yeah, it's a different fund.
Oh, I get, there is, yeah.
And it's fun, just make it confusing with so many different departments in the village.
The light department has their own, their, they're their own, and it doesn't affect the general fund.
I understand that.
And they, they go on-
Well, they have, they have their own budget and it's funded by, by charging us for, uh, electricity, but it's just as important as the general fund as far as the residents are concerned, I think.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's money out of their pocket, you know?
That's, that's why it's nice giving up one lineman to pay for it, makes sense. Uh, and this way, the foreman or the supervisor will have to go out on one of the units because they need two people on each truck that they send out, and so now they don't have that extra person, so either the supervisor or the foreman will have to go out. And they said, they both said they will be willing to do that under this contract.
Just a point of clarification too, as you mentioned, as you bring up foreman and supervisor, they're not included in this CSCEA light division, they're in the supervisor's unit.
Correct, you're right.
So, you are, you are talking about two separate-
Uh-huh.
Unions.
Uh, two separate union contracts.
Yep. But he's not getting raised, they're just, they're just doing the work is what I meant.
Well, he's got a proposal.
No, I, I want, I, I think that we should have a, like Bob said, have Bob look at it and, and sit down and do a more in-depth proposal.
Okay.
So, this is just something that they were talking about that they wanted to do.
So, make a motion to table it?
Sure.
And then, uh, Bob, would you be, um, talking to them and telling them the specifics that we're going to need?
Yeah.
Or how do they, how do they find that out?
He held it over from last time, what does this mean?
Well, uh, this was on the agenda last time?
Yes, and we held it over.
Okay.
Well, you can- I think we tabled, did we table it or hold it over? I can't remember what we did.
I have to look and see.
Yeah.
You, you go to, to table it, um, again, there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to table this, light department. Well, let's make sure we get right on it because we do not want to lose any more people to NICEAG, especially if they, especially if they want to take one of our experienced guys, because until we have this, we won't get paid back for the experienced guys.
Just according to the minutes, it was tabled last time.
Okay.
Just so you know, table it again.
Very good, thank you.
So, then I still have the question of, um, how, how will we get the information to them of what we are asking for?
Bob will talk to them.
The specifics.
I'll have to chat to, uh, Chad.
Chad, mhm, and that'll, that'll help.
Table it.
That way we can, we can pair apples to apples, because one of us talks, and we won't be doing that.
Right. And you know it's, get into a, put it in legal ease of a contract.
There you go, legal ease, I love that.
I could try to reach out to NICEAG, too, if, maybe an HR person there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can give us their, you know-
Give us their breakdowns and their package deals, yeah.
I think they have two units, the administrative and then the lineman, if I remember correctly. So, that might be a little bit different between departments.
Okay.
Eileen tabled that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we need a second and a vote for tabling.
Oh, I'll second that, I mean, we'll have it, but-
Um-
Yes.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Now, we have our home improvement exemption summary. This is interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you want to go over that?
Would you?
Yeah, so, um, this is coming up again, but, um, we have a law that's already on the books from nineteen ninety-eight that provides an exemption under real property tax law, four twenty-one F, and what it is, is an exemption, um, for the, uh, the value added to a property for improvements that are made. It's a, it's a partial tax exemption, and it phases out over a period of time. The first year is a hundred percent, and it reduces by twelve and a half percent every year until it's done. Um, so, uh, so this, this exemption is already on the books, uh, and it's been on the books since nineteen ninety-eight, uh, and there was a resolution adopted about five years ago, um, to essentially to, to add the resolution for, or to add the exemption for five years, but, um, that resolution really had no legal effect because it has to be done by local law anyway. So, it, it's my opinion, we don't need to act on this right now, it just needs to be filed with the Department of Taxation, which never occurred.
Oh, wow.
And that's required for this kind of law, so, um, what I think the proper course of action to do is, is just take the nineteen ninety-eight law, file it with the Department of Taxation, get that on the books. It was already filed with the Department of State, like all local laws are, that's already on the books. We just need to get it with the Department of Taxation and, um, it should be good to go.
Oh.
So, that would be my, uh, recommendation.
So, we want to make a recommendation to file this with the, uh, tax-
Department of Taxation.
The Department of Taxation. I'll make a motion to file the home improvement exemptions, um, RPTL section four twenty-four dash F with the Department of Taxation.
I'll second that.
Uh, what is it we're actually doing now? We're making a motion to do what?
Well, Ted, so thi, this is a, a law that provides an exemption, uh, for improvements that are made to residential properties, certain residential properties.
Yes, right.
Tax benefit to help encourage, um, home improvements in the village. So, that law was already on the books, it's been on the books since nineteen ninety-eight. The law is supposed to be filed in two places, one with the Department of State and the other with Department of Taxation. Back in ninety-eight, it was filed with the Department of State, but it, it appears, at least based on the information we can, we can gather, it may not have been filed with the Department of Taxation. So, we're going to take that step and file it just so it's on the books, um, but it's already been adopted and voted on, and there was a public hearing, and it's on record with the state, just not with the state Department of Taxation.
So, we're making a motion to file it with Department of Taxation, then is?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I already made the motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
I got a question for Bob, just, uh, if you can explain this a little bit. I see that like the maximum value of the improvement is eighty grand, okay?
Yep.
Now, the assessor would give the homeowner what the increase in taxes would be on that eighty thousand dollars, and he'd be exempt from that. Say it's a three thousand dollar increase in your taxes, you, the next year you'd be paying, uh, only twelve point five percent of what the assessor said the increase would cost you, is that, do I read that or not?
The, the first year you don't pay anything-
Yeah.
-for the increased value of the property, and then, and then the next year, year two, you pay eighty-eight point five percent, is that right? Eighty?
Something like that.
Um- You, you, it drops by twelve and a half percent.
Each year.
Each year.
For eight years.
Eighty-seven point five percent, and then seventy-five percent, sixty-two point five percent, fifty percent. It goes all the way down until the exemption e- eventually runs out.
So, the first year you have a maximum savings on increasing your taxes.
Right.
Kind of like a personal pilot.
Yeah.
Kind of stuff.
It kind of is.
Yeah. In just real simple terms, sorry.
That's okay.
You got a roll call on that, I think?
Yep.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
I, I ask a question before you want to do this. Now, we've got a lot of, uh, activity going on in September. And to make sure we have enough time to do this, repailing of that law, the recycling law, make sure we have enough time to do the, if the petitions are finalized, if we have enough time, want to make sure we have enough time to do the seeker and doing everything so everything would be done the same night. Is that something we could, could make sure happens, or?
Can we move the time up if that's the- Would you, would you like to wait and call a special meeting if we do get the petitions earlier? We, we can, we can do that if you'd like.
I just want to make sure we all get halfway through-
Yeah.
And then have to do the seeker and the text.
Well, as long as Cheryl doesn't break her foot, we'll be fine.
Hey, say that, that could be a possibility.
Start at six.
Yeah, I, I make a motion to start the next meeting at six o'clock. That's a good idea, because we can do that.
That's fine.
And, and all of the public hearings on that day will, will begin at six o'clock.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, what do you think about that, Ted? Starting our next meeting on September ninth?
Correct.
Yes, yes, we will have to change the motion.
Okay, so we change the motion for the meeting on the, um, ninth?
Ninth, start at six o'clock.
Right.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, or also I'm in favor-
Just more human.
I, I would be in-
Start at six.
I would be in favor of that, or I would, I would also be in favor of what, uh, you said, Linda. To call a special meeting just for the-
Well, how about, we'll, we'll call a special meeting, we'll talk about it and call a special meeting, is that agreeable?
Yeah, that might be a good idea, since there's so many public hearings that one night.
Yeah, so, so we'll see if we can get it back earlier, we'll, well, you, you, when you talk to them tomorrow, like I said, get, get a final date and give them a, give them a closer date then.
Well, we'll try, but we've had, we've had five, uh, it'll, it'll be ready at the end of the week, five times so far, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. Promises, promises. But we still- Ted, how are you, hopefully because those feet to the fire. Pretty good at that?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay, good. Please do. Yes, that'll help, that'll help.
Well, we still, like you said, we still have a lot of public hearings that-
Yes, so we can still start it at six, I agree. It's, it's just way too late. Sure. Be doing that.
So, let's have, let's make that a motion and a, uh, so it's a motion to have, uh, 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 the meeting and all the public hearings on September 9th begin at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Yes, I said that. Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Well, he's just reiterating.
That's okay.
So that was your motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we heard you, Cheryl.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made it?
And Eileen seconded it. Yep.
Okay. We'll do a roll call on that. Trustee connecting?
Yes.
Trustee Doerner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Now, is there any new business?
Uh, yes, I have something. Um, right now, the state, Cuomo and the state has no, they do not have any law that says we have to be on Zoom meetings. There's no law against in-person meetings. And it's really the choice of each municipality board.
Right.
And the Town of Union, uh, has in-person meetings right now. They've had them for the past couple of months. And Linda, I think you go to almost all of them, or maybe 90% of them.
Right.
So I would like for us to, to, to start having these in-person meetings starting on September 9th. Uh, there's nothing, there's nothing to make us...
We don't have enough room for everybody. We're only allowed 50%. We don't have the room to have it, and it's very, very difficult. We have to worry about social distancing. We have to write everybody's name in and out. You have to use the hand sanitizers. You have to take their temperature. It's a very, very, uh, hard thing. We have to rearrange the whole room. I love having people here. Now, the, the governor's going to go back over it on September 4th, so why don't we see what he says on September 4th? Cause if he could allow us to have our regular meetings and invite enough people in so we don't have to do Zoom both, because it's hard to do half here and half on Zoom. I think it's very, very difficult.
Every municipality that is holding in-person meetings has those same problems that you spelled out in there. And you, you know, you go to the Town of Union meeting, so you know that that is that.
You know the headache.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to finish here. Uh, since you go to those meetings, you, it's not that big a headache that has made you not go to those meetings anymore, so. Um, you have been saying for months that you can't wait until we can get back to regular meetings. Well, there is no law against regular meetings. We could have them out in the rotunda. The Town of Union, I think, only allows 13 people, and they get, they do social distancing. If we had our meetings out in the rotunda, which they've been there many other times, we could probably have 20 or 22 people out there. And, uh, we, we, we've never, let me finish. We've never had, that you or I have known of, and since you've been a trustee, we've never had 22 people at a meeting, ever, except that Kyle Washington meeting. So, um, that should not be a problem to fit 22 people out there in the rotunda.
Actually, I'd like to...
Linda, if more than 20 people show up, they just can't come in.
Yeah, they can't, cause then, but then we have to legally allow them to listen to the meeting. We, we can't, we can't not let them listen to the meeting. That's a definite law.
Yes, you, you have the...
But if they don't allow them in, that's not fair.
Yes, you, no, yes, it is fair, because everybody else does it. You have the in-person meetings for the ones who want to come, and the ones that don't want to come to the meeting, they can still listen to it on Zoom.
But then it's confusing to go through both. I'll tell you what.
No, it's not confusing.
I think, you know, I think...
Everybody else does it.
Well, we'll, then we'll, then you can make, you can put that on the agenda for September 9th, and we'll talk about it.
And Ted, we look forward to seeing you sit in your chair.
There you go. There you go. Yep.
Well, if, to, to do this, there's two choices. You can come to the meeting, or you can be on Zoom.
Well, you can bring that up at the, then put it on the next agenda, and we will discuss it on, um, September 9th. We'll make a, and we will make the motion and vote on it then. That's, that's a perfect idea.
Are you telling us that you're not going to be here?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you mean. Uh, and I have a, I have a letter today, Linda, from you, an email today at 3:25.
Ted, Ted, why don't we wait to go under Board Member Comments, and then you can tell us all about it?
I would like to finish what I'm saying. I have an email today from you on this topic, and from 3:25 today. You said, "I really look, I really look forward to be able to go back to allowing people to come and actually come to the board meetings in person." So
That's right.
I don't, why are you resisting it?
I'm not. It's very difficult for our administrator to have to go through people here and on Zoom. If we can get rid of Zoom altogether, man, I'd have people in here tomorrow. If we could get rid of Zoom altogether. But I was informed that that's not legal yet, because I have to know...
You were informed by who?
Well, uh, Bob, Bob explained it to me, cause I read the thing wrong. I thought that I just had to let them hear the recording, and Bob said, "No." That, well, would you like to explain to him why we have to have it?
Right, I, right, I, I can explain, and Ted pretty much did summarize the, the state of the law right now. Um, we need to allow the public to be able to observe, um, and listen to, uh, the meetings. Um, so in, the tricky thing though, Ted, is if we're having a, a public hearing, um, we, we can't just close the doors. We need to be able to have a Zoom meeting to allow, uh, people to participate. Because we have certain occupancy limitations, right? So you can, you have to have six feet apart, 50% capacity, and other safety requirements. So we need to be able to balance, we need to be able to balance this, and the only way to really do it is to allow the public to attend, uh, through Zoom. So I, I, I don't know if I'm explaining myself clearly, but it basically, Ted, if we went with only a live meeting, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the room to do that. Or that's the danger at least. People can throw up and you have to throw them away.
Just to be clear, that's not at all what I'm saying. What I'm saying is have open meetings, and we also, at the same time, have the Zoom meeting going. For people that don't want to come, this is exactly how Town of Union does it. You can go there in person, or you can stay home and watch it on Zoom.
All right, I, I thought what you were saying is not to have the Zoom and have only live, uh, people.
No, no, we'd have to, we would have to have both.
Great. That is permissible.
Well, we can, we can discuss that on September 9th then. We will bring it up on the agenda, and we will discuss it, cause it's not on the agenda for tonight. So we will bring it up on September 9th.
Well, it's under New Business, so there's nothing under, on the agenda under New Business, so that's what we're talking about right now.
And that's very interesting, and we will discuss it on September 9th, because you want to make a motion, and we will have to make that. We have to have time to think about it. You can make it a motion on September 9th. Cause it is new business.
Get us the motion before then. Put it...
What was the last comment?
Could there be a...
Then you can start making up the motion whenever you're ready, but we won't be putting it, we won't be talking about it till September 9th.
Could there be a method?
Well, this has been going on now for about seven or eight or nine...
Pat's talking, Pat's speaking.
This has been, this has been going on for seven or eight or nine weeks now, where there's always a different reason every meeting why the public can't talk. And now we're coming up with another reason. You've been telling us for months, you hate Zoom. You can't, there is no such thing as out of order.
Yes, there is.
We don't, we do not have Robert Trills of Order. We're not going by Robert Trills of Order, so there's... There's no such thing as out of order.
No, there is. And you are out of order. Pat's talking, and you can speak after he talks. It's not nice to interrupt him.
Okay, let me know when, when it's my turn.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, Ted, okay. Could there be, like, if a maximum in the rotunda is 22 people, could there be a way where 22 people can sign up? And the rest stay home and watch it on Zoom? Is there, could that be enacted in some way so some people can come and talk?
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of ways we could do it. We could basically do first come, first served, so the first 20 people who show up, that, and then we've hit our capacity limit, and anyone else, we have to tell them, "No, you gotta go home and, and watch it on Zoom."
Yep.
Um, or we could do a, a pre-sign-in process. If you, you sign up by, you know, the Wednesday before the meeting, whatever it is, um, we could allow that group of people. So really, either way.
What are you talking about? Having this in the rotunda for?
For, for, Pedro.
Well, we talked about having it in the rotunda, and we talked about having speakers out in the parking lot. We talked about having speakers out in the rotunda, having it here and there. We talked about bringing in the, um, court attendant to have to escort people in and out if we brought them in to speak. We examined about 10 different ways to do this, and I have been at the Town of Union, and I don't like it. I'm not going back to another Town of Union meeting. It's just too confusing. And it's confusing to ask people here to speak, and then on, on Zoom to speak, and then on their phones to speak. It's very, very tedious. So I'm hoping that by September 4th, we can find out if we can actually have them or not.
Well, the other thing too, is when you start having the court attendant, now you're, you're having unnecessary costs.
True, yes.
And, um, we're in a spending freeze here. We can't keep...
Okay, there is, there is no, there is no question whether you can have these things or not. You've been going to the Town, you've been going to the Town of Union meetings. They've been doing it exactly that way. So we know this is allowed. We know what the law is, and we can do it. It's, it's just that you keep holding it back on us every single week.
Only because it's a difficult situation to handle, and, and it's a big responsibility letting people come in here with the COVID pandemic that we have. We have to take their temperature, to have to, um, make sure there's social distancing. It's a very big liability.
Well, why would we, why would we continue, why would we continue to list reasons not to do this? When Town of Union list a couple of reasons to do it, and they went ahead and did it.
Because they can do whatever they want to. I'm not responsible for those residents. I'm responsible for 12,000 people in the Village of Endicott, and that's why we didn't open the pools. That's why we're not having people come in here unless they're invited. We have our doors locked now. We're taking this pandemic very seriously. We're doing the best we can to protect our residents.
I don't know how serious you are. Every time I've been there, I've never seen you wear a mask one time.
But you're on, in my office with me, are you? Are you six feet away from me?
I've seen you numerous times down there.
That's right, and you're not with me in my office. My heads of departments meet me in the hallway. They, they talk for me to, to me from the door. Nobody comes in my office. But Ted, that's not the point. Point is, I have to look out for other people. I'm responsible. But you can put it on the agenda, and we can talk about it on September 9th. Now, I would like to go into, um, Board Member Comments, and you'll have another chance to speak, Ted. But we'll start off with Eileen.
Great, thanks, Linda.
My pleasure. No, I'm good.
Thank you. Ted, do you have anything else you'd like to add for tonight? Okay.
I'm good.
Are you? There, there you go, Ted. Now it's your turn again. Do you have anything else you want to say?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Were there any, were there any questions, uh, submitted for the hearing of visitors?
No, there was not.
Really?
No, there was not, no. Um, and, uh...
What about the, what about the hearing of visitors? That you just skipped over?
Nobody, nobody, uh, nobody wanted to be involved. Nobody wrote us anything. I made my secretary sit at her desk until noon to make sure.
I was there.
Yeah, that's right, you were here. I made her sit there. Um, I'm going to explain a couple of things, cause I know that's been very confusing. Our village board meetings are to allow the public to listen in on village decisions and business. Uh, when we have laws or codes to present, we call for a public hearing, so residents can voice their comments on those specific topics. Municipalities are under absolutely no requirement to have any hearing of visitors, as per New York state law. The Broom County Legislature does not. As you say, we, we should do things like the Town of Union. Well, maybe we should do things like the Broom County Legislature. Because I believe that even though they don't have them, we, and, and, uh, we don't have to do things because they do, or because the Town of Union does, or because how we have done things in the past. We have to adjust to what is best interest of running the efficient meetings now. Zoom is a difficult, it's difficult to accommodate many speakers on a variety of screens for the administrator to sort out. We have four times the amount of people at any one time that the Town of Union does, so we have a lot more people. And that's why the state set up an alternate way to request people to send in their comments before the Zoom meetings. This is a protocol agreement we voted on to accept at our June 15th meeting with all trustees agreeing.
That's right.
The reason many laws are now being enforced is because we're trying to keep our meetings professional and up to date. And when you made the suggestion to me, I did listen to it. Now, now, I, only the topics on the agenda from now on will be discussed. No personal attacks. Questions must be answered by phone or mail after the board meetings, as we've always done. And the board meetings are not a place for debate. And that's, that's kind of the long and the short of it. The state said that we can...
I, I disagree. The board, the board meetings, you can't tell the, us that the board meetings where we, we can't debate things.
It's not a time to debate, I said. It's not a time to debate.
I'm saying, that's what the board meetings are for, to debate over all these issues.
Um, actually, come into the office. Or come into the office, or on a work session. But anyway, I think that we've had enough for tonight. Eileen, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll suck it.
Linda, Linda's tired.
Yep, Linda's. Actually, actually, I'm not. I'm ready to go have another cup of coffee. Is, um, everybody agreeable to adjourn the meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
Very good. Meeting adjourned.
Case you, Anthony.
Ted, were you gonna let us know what we find out tomorrow with, um, Delta?
At the next meeting, if I got, but I gotta put it on the agenda though, I guess.
We'll thank you. We'll take care. Bye, Ted.
We'll send an email tomorrow.
Oh my God. Oh, man. Another freak show, baby. Village of Endicott uh, never ceases to disappoint. Okay, what I gotta do? I gotta do, get rid of that one, make that a little cleaner. Okay. So um, wow, uh, what were some of the highlights? First of all, the, uh, the Delta report still is not done. Let's keep a running, running tally. Um, hmm, it's not the one I wanted. Okay, Endicott Village Board Meeting. I guess I can leave that one up. And where is the other one? It's always crazy in Endicott. So, okay, I'm just gonna reuse this one. So first, let's move it. Me, oh, wrong way. There we go. And make it even a little bit narrower than that, I think. And can I? Okay, so, one thing was the, uh... So that's one kind of interesting thing. Oh, why didn't, oh, because, let me do it like this, cause I always... Okay, so, there we go. The Delta report still isn't done. Isn't that interesting? They're still arguing over boundaries and things. Uh, I thought that was interesting. What else did we learn? So there was no vote tonight, and there was a lot of discussion about public hearings. And, uh, still a lot of pushback from Ted. Always, uh, great to hear Ted, uh, pushing back on Linda Jackson. Um, makes for very entertaining meetings, and I just appreciate that Ted is, you know, he's got a, a certain, um, diligence and a certain, uh, you know, he wants to make sure that, you know, rules are followed and procedures are followed, things are done correctly, and people are given their voice. And, um, so there's always a lot of fun back and forth. Um, there was supposed to be a, a hearing of visitors tonight, and now they're, you know, and they even talked about, you know, clicking, raising the hand, and they had one hearing on the, um, the cafe permits. And I didn't hear, I heard one speaker say, "I'm all for it," and that was it. So there wasn't any technological problem. Why didn't they have a hearing of the visitors? And there's no requirement, she's right, there's no legal requirement that they have to have a hearing of visitors. But, uh, she keeps saying that she, you know, she wants to hear from the people. She keeps saying she wants to have people in the building, and uh, always lots of excuses. So, um, the other one was the no voice of the rabble. There was no voice of the rabble. Oh, the next thing was, uh, there was updates about the, uh, what does Mark call it? Mark calls it the, uh, the Barb Fiala? Donna. I'm just gonna say the pipeline, the Barb Fiala Donna Lupardo Pipeline. And there was a few other people involved in that thing. And, uh, basically, it's a, I think of it, I think of the primary function of it. I could be wrong, but I think the primary function of that was leachate. And so we're not seeing the trucks so much anymore, but the leachate's still coming. It's like, hey, Ted said tonight, Ted was like, "Hey, you got any, uh, uh, you got any ideas?" Um, to Anthony, "Got any ideas about the volume?" He's like, "Uh, I don't have it really off the top of my head. I think I got it in a file folder somewhere." "Oh yeah, how much money are we making?" And he kind of broke it down. He broke down little segments of it. But no mention of the total. I didn't hear the total number, so there's still, there's some interesting questions about the, uh, leachate. The leachate pipeline. And, um, there was also the thing about the, uh, airport waste. There was, uh... ethylene glycol and other stuff. Let me see if Brett is still on. Is Brett still watching? John Solak says NiSEG is going to poach all the linemen they can get. Um, yeah, I don't know why. Why would, is NiSEG hiring? Is that the idea behind that? I don't know. Um, I know they're, they're trying to do a, a rate increase. Um, there's a rate case right now going on, and I'm sort of a party, but I haven't really been participating in it very much. Um, and I know they're getting beat up pretty, NiSEG is getting, or was getting beat up pretty hard about the, their lack of, um, maintenance. A lot, there's a lot of line problems because of trees. So they were getting beat up about that, so maybe they aren't gonna be hiring. Do they need linemen to cut trees? Or, I guess they just need linemen because their lines need servicing. Um, okay, let's see. Um, what else did we hear about? I'm trying to think back of what we heard tonight. Airport waste, ethylene glycol. Um, no hearing of the visitors. There was the, I mean, there was some other business. They paid some bills and things, and there was, uh, hiring of a contractor to do some repairs up at, um, up at the park up there. Um, the, the Phil Grayson for the sewage treatment plant wanted a ba, wanted to buy a backhoe, used backhoe. Um, trying to think what else. I should call up the agenda. I, I did get a copy of the agenda. But, um, it still seems like, uh, this pipeline thing is, not the pipeline, it seems like the, um... Uh, I think we're in really good shape for the, uh, you know, talking about the incinerator. Just trying to rearrange my screen, and, okay. So, like, where's my fancy chart? Open. Oh, where is this thing? I probably got it. There, I got it up here. I can get it this way. Is this the one I'm looking for? Um, yeah. So let's do... Where's this shop? Shop over there. Never. Okay, well, let's take this, let's take, since we're on this slide, let's take this opportunity and just say, uh, just remember, it's always a good day to call Donna Lupardo and talk to her staff about Sanjil, the incinerator, and make her say inciner- And make her say incinerator. Make her staff say incinerator. And the fact that, uh, we need a legal seeker process. Donna Lupardo, she has trouble asking for that. You ask her about it and she's like, "Uh, I can't, I don't, I don't know. I can't. I'm not well-informed." She's the one that signed the press release with Empire State Development back in September of 2018. That's how long Donna Lupardo's been on the incinerator push. So, but this is the, uh... You know, we're basically trying to get a, a legal seeker process. Went too far. This is the legal seeker process. This is what really, I've been trying, this is all of my work for the last six months or so. Just trying to get a legal seeker process, okay? And that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the red line is the red kind of path. Is what we got. That's what I call the Endicott Special. Because here's the Endicott Special, okay? It's an unlisted seeker action, uh, which is the middle uh, of, you know, there's a type two, which is just completely trivial. There's no environmental review at all. Then there's the middle one, unlisted action. And then there's the top one, which is the type, uh, type one seeker action. That's what we should have gotten by law. But we, instead, we got the Endicott Special. The Endicott Special is a bundle of, uh, of regulatory free passes. You just, they, they hand you, you know, Empire State Development hands them, you know, upon receipt of the check or whatever it is, they hand them these coupons. Okay, what's this coupon for? This is, this part of the Endicott Special. That, that gets you an unlisted action, even if you should have gotten a type one. Okay. What's this one? Well, this is the, uh, this is the coordinated review. This is the opt-out of the coordinated review. Basically, we're not gonna do a coordinated review. And when it comes down to it, we're gonna make up a story. Okay. What else is the, uh, the Endicott Special? Uh, no environmental impact statement and no public hearing. Even when people scream about a public hearing, there's no public hearing. So, that's, that's some of, that might not be all of what makes an Endicott Special. But it's basically, the Endicott Special is the, uh, the regulatory free pass that they give any kind of toxic, industrial, polluting, um, industry that wants to come to Endicott, whether it's stink trucks or leachate dumping or whatever it is. So, we're still trying to get the green path. We're trying to get from the red, the red path. We're sort of down here at the end right now. Down here at the end. We're trying to get over, back over here, type one seeker. This is what I've been trying to do. And I've been trying to get No Burn Broom to join me. And, uh, for some reason, I don't know what their issue is. Oh, I'm, you're not looking at what I'm looking at. Shoot. I'm sorry about that. I have to do this. Have to do that. And... Sorry. Okay. I'm sorry about that. I gotta, I have to repeat that, I think. We go back and look once I get my... You know, a lot of layers. OBS. It pays to clean up, get rid of layers that you don't use because it increases the time that it takes. All right. So, once again, um, this is not exactly up to date. Well, it's not really eight, it's really 15. This is the complete list. Type one seeker. I'm still searching No Burn Broom for type one seeker. I'm not finding it on the website. I don't hear No Burn Broom talking about type one seeker. Somebody call Paul Connett and ask him, shouldn't, shouldn't we be, um... I had a joke about that. What was my joke? About a covalent, covalent bond? Foot to foot, like with your, the bottom of your feet form this, and they get stuck. And it requires, you gotta like, you gotta use chemistry to break that bond. When you're playing footsie and your bottom of your feet gets stuck together, you gotta go... I wish I could do one of those popping noise. Um, ask Paul Connett about a type one seeker. I don't know. I wonder if, what do what No Burn Broom feel? I mean, I know what they feel about PFAS cuz they, you know, they, they're always talking about PFAS. And they're very successful at getting other people talking about PFAS. And all of a sudden, the community is, it sounds like this, this choir of like some little chirping toys going, "PFAS, PFAS, 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 PFAS." The big problem about talking about PFAS right now is they're gonna solve it, I'm gonna keep saying this until people hear me. They're gonna solve it with permit conditions. So, yeah, the great, I mean, I can't believe it. I'm just telling you what's going on. The great and amazing Paul Connett, who I adore and I think the world of him. And all his work on fluoride and zero waste and all this different stuff. He's an amazing guy, Paul Connett. Paul Connett is cozy with the perp. And Paul Connett is negotiating for permit conditions. And if he's not, prove it. I wanna be able to search the No Burn Broom website. And I wanna see, I wanna see the term type one seeker. That's the pathway to an EIS. And I'm really glad to see some changes to the No Burn Broom website. I'm glad to see that it's evolving a little bit. And I see some references to seeker now, right in the front page, right at the top. I'm thrilled. And that Bob McCurdy's letter that you're linking to, it's pretty good. It's pretty good. He doesn't list this stuff. He doesn't list, he lists some of these things. But this is the most complete list uh, of what needs to happen here. We need to start over. We need to call Donna Lupardo and say, "Donna, we want a legal seeker process." Start over from the very beginning with a type one seeker. We don't want the Endicott Special. We always get the Endicott Special. We want it done properly this time by the law. Doesn't it make sense that people working for the state of New York ought to follow the law? Is that, is that... Is that ridiculous? Is that out in left field? That the people working for the government should follow the law? So, if you're out there in Endicott land, or if you're downwind in Vestal or Union, Johnson City, Kirkwood, Binghamton, you're gonna be impacted by this thing. You are a stakeholder. You need to get involved. Make some phone calls. My suggestion is, number one phone call should be to Donna Lupardo. You can find her number easily on the internet. I've given it to you before. Her email address is published. Look her up, contact Donna. Donna's name was on the very first press release. She signed off on this thing either one of two things. And neither one is good. One is, she knew it was an incinerator and she signed up on a PR program where her job became not to represent the people, but to bullshit the people with a public relations campaign. "Oh, it's green manufacturing. Oh, Professor Stan Whittingham. I, Imperium Three, man, green manufact..." We're just now a year and a half into this thing. We're just now getting Donna to admit that there's a heating process. It's a, it's like a heater. Kinda like a heater in your car. Only it runs at a thousand degrees Fahrenheit. It's like this natural gas flame that's about 30 feet long. Probably sounds like a rocket engine in there. It's like... What does a thousand degree, you know, afterburner look and sound like? That's what I'm interested. I wonder if they got one in the building over there yet. I don't think they do. Friends, there's a lot of stuff that San Gil's gotta go through. We're supposed to get an environmental impact statement. That requires a positive declaration. A positive declaration just requires one unmitigated impact by permit conditions. Just one. And I wanna say that No Burn Broom and Concerned Citizens of Endicott have together collectively identified, I don't know, about a dozen or so, something like that. Road impacts, uh, air quality impacts, water quality impacts, uh... Economic impacts. You can, you know, impacts to property values, impacts to the tax base. So many different impacts that have not been even talked about, identified, let alone mitigated in permit conditions. Dozen, a dozen at least, I would say. A dozen, 12. Threshold is one to get a positive declaration. You gotta commit fraud in order to issue a negative declaration for this thing. They still gotta change the zoning. This, the zoning thing is still in this weird state of limbo where there isn't a final decision yet, I don't think. Because they're waiting for this, the result of this Delta thing is gonna go on forever. So, maybe, maybe San Gil is gonna fall asleep and drown in their soup, you know, goes plop. Maybe San Gil's just gonna like get bored and give up. And that might be the plan, just drag this out. We're dragging it out. Friends, is, you know, I have issues with a lot of these people. Probably they have issues with me. I keep getting blocked and banned and all this crazy stuff. But, really, we're kicking ass. We are kicking ass. Cuz we got this covered so many different ways. Uh, you know, we're kicking ass. And we just got, we can't get complacent. Don't get complacent, people. But, we're totally kicking ass. We are kicking San Gil's ass. And, uh, you know, all of the government, all of the agents under, acting under color of law, we're kicking their asses too. The ones that wanted to bring this thing here. Nobody expected this kind of pushback. So, this is kind of amazing. It's kind of amazing to see. I talked about this at the start of the show. The two, the, uh, site plan review. Uh, that's discretionary, according to what I heard. Uh, it's up to code enforcement, which is, or the, uh, the fire marshal. It's either Brian Botzford or it's, uh... I'm trying to blank on the other guy's name. What's the, uh, the fire chief? Endicott Fire Chief. Why can't I think of it? Brian Botzford and Joe Griswold. Joe Griswold. Okay, so, we got John. Uh, public hearings have to be properly noticed in advance. Yep. Uh, what's, I think it's 48 hours, right, John? I think it's 48 hours. I gotta check. I don't remember the deadline. What a phony. Is Linda concerned about BLM? Well, I would think she should be because, wasn't it BLM, John, that, uh, that went after her and, uh, and Cheryl Chapman? I think that was kind of a BLM stunt. And it's so weird, John, since you bring that up, I just wanna say this, um, history about that, about that, that whole BLM thing. So, John, do you think that this is, that this is, uh, that this is crazy? I think this is crazy. This sounds crazy to me. Let me just spell it out. And I want you to tell me if you think this is crazy, okay? That the, that the chair, uh, what's her name? Bridget, Bridget, uh... The chair of the local Democratic Party, Bridget Kane, John, Bridget Kane. The chair of the local Democratic Party called for the resignation of a fellow Democrat on village council because of this. Click, click. Because of something went like this. And denotatively, I mean, the only thing, the only argument that you can make is that it's a racist slogan or it's racist trope. But even, that's, that's, there's an argument that that's ridiculous because it's a denotative phrase. It's like sometimes people just wanna talk in plain English. They don't wanna talk in slogans. So, when you say black lives matter as a denotative phrase, okay, we got that. You gotta be able to say, you know, white lives, red lives, brown lives, however many different kind of hue names you wanna come up with, then don't they all matter? Oh, you can't say that. You can't say all lives matter. You can't say white lives matter. That's a racist slogan. That's stupid. It's, it's a psy-op, okay? It's a psy-op. Black Lives Matter is a psy-op. And they're trying to make it so that you can't even talk in plain English without being called a racist. It's stupid. It's stupidity, okay? So, Bridget Kane, let me just recap, John. Recap for you. Bridget Kane, the chair of the Democratic Party, she called for a Republican to resign. That's kinda funny, don't you think? It's like, well, why? What, what power or jurisdiction does the chair of the local Democratic Party have over asking a Republican to resign? But it was over somebody doing this. Click, click. It was just like this. Just like this. Here's a close-up. It's like, click, click, click. This is what it was. It's like, "Oh my god, you gotta resign." "Well, what did you do?" "I went like this. Click." Meanwhile, Donna Lupardo, for a year and a half, is colluding with industry, lying to her constituents. Either lying or severely neglecting her constituents by failing to do research, necessary research, and communicating reality to her constituents. No, she's like, "Here, Donna, sign this." "What is it? You're signing, it's, it's green manufacturing. Duh. Okay, what's in it for me?" "Well, this and this and this." Okay, good enough for Donna. She signs off on it. Meanwhile, green manufacturing, that's what she tells us, okay? So... We need to really keep calling Donna. Oh, so Democratic Party, Democratic Party, uh, Chair. For a mouse click, she asked for resignations. One mouse click, click. A year and a half of gaslighting her own constituents and colluding with industry in what looks to me like a crime syndicate. Where's Bridget Kane? Where's the local Democratic Party on the, on the, the shenanigans? The gang that's trying to bring the incinerator to Binghamton? And you know what I see? Let's, let's look at something here. Who are the people that signed that original press release, other than political appointees like NY Best and Empire State Development? Let's look at the elected officials. Let's just look at them, okay? Who do we have? We have, uh, Andrew Cuomo. He issued the press release. Donna Lupardo, uh, New York Assembly for the 1/23rd. We have, uh, Broom County Executive Jason Garner and Village of Endicott, uh, John Bertoni. Let's see. It's like, remember that old Sesame Street about... Well, that was about one of these things is not like the other. There's not one of those things that's not like the other. All these things are the same. What's this, what's similar about Governor Cuomo, Donna Lupardo, Jason Garner, John Bertoni? Do they have anything in similar, you know, in common? Like, uh, what political party do they belong to? So, I'm just saying... So I'm just saying, friends, I just want to know what you think, John. Do you think that that's hypocrisy? That Bridget Kane, the chair of the local Democratic Party calls for resignations over a mouse click. Meanwhile, Donna Lupardo is engaged in what looks like criminal activity and nothing happens. So okay, well, I don't see any response. This is it, friends. This is the complete list. 15 steps of San Gil. Nobody's doing this work except for me. I'm the banned one. I keep getting banned and blocked and censored. So if you appreciate my content, friends, you're going to have to seek it out. You're going to have to come find me because it's getting harder and harder for me to get my work in front of people. And I work, I really survive on donations and grants. So I really can use, you know, your assistance. I need to raise $500 every single month, minimum, just to survive, pay my basic costs. Tinyurl.com/donatetobillhouston, that's my PayPal. And my snail mail is P O Box 22, Endicott, New York, 13761. If I don't see anything in the chat, I'm going to be signing off. History, I see message retracted. So I see you tried to say something, John. All right, three likes. If you haven't hit the like button, hit the like button. I'm going to sign off. Thanks for tuning in and watching the Bill Houston Podcast. And make sure you subscribe. If you haven't already subscribed, there's my email address. If you want to contact me, williamahouston@gmail.com or find me on Facebook or Twitter or any of that stuff. That's pretty much my extent of social media, Facebook and Twitter, Twitter. Okay, friends, see you later.